For setting a culture of collaboration. That's awesome, and thanks to all of you in the room. So to begin with, I think I'll just talk a little bit about the association for folks who are not familiar. And so we've got a couple of slides to that end. But as you know, the County Supervisors Association is a nonpartisan collaboration of the 15 counties. We're focused on creating a forum to share information, building information that can be used in decision making, and then serving as an intergovernmental office to support the 15 counties in the state. And intergovernmental functions are really important because of all the various actors that affect county operations. And you know them well, obviously, the state government, state agencies, the court system, and federal entities. So through this collaboration, we're trying to strengthen the 15-county partnership with these external entities. I do want to thank Mr. Ryan for serving on our Legislative Policy Committee and Ms. Horstman for serving in that capacity as well. We tap them regularly on Fridays to provide information into our organization throughout the legislative session. And we couldn't do it without the good feedback that's coming in from your staff. And so I do appreciate that extra duty that all of you participated in. But as you know, we are supervisor-driven. Every supervisor has a seat at our table, a voice at our board, and it's our pleasure to direct our energies in ways that support you. Now, the balance of the presentation, I'll break down into three parts. The first is to talk about what we've been doing in terms of capacity development and information sharing. The second will be about how we're building our data and analytics function. And the third will be talking a little bit about the legislative session and some of the results from this last year and where we'll be going going forward. What you see here, I know, is a splash of information and a splash of color, but I wanted to just hit some key buckets of activity. One is, as you know, we focus on using the Supervisors Association as a forum to bring together not just supervisors, but key policy professionals and elected officials from the state and federal government to come together and talk to county officials. So you can see here the list of folks that we had brought through our forum in the last year. And I share that just as much to report out as to ask for input going forward because we're setting our agenda right now and the speakers will be having come in going forward. In the orange, you can see the professional staff groups that we collaborate with. These are the County Managers Association, the Finance Directors, the Planning Directors, and others. This is where county staff across this state collaborate through the association and with one another to provide good information to. And I'll tell you, it is a goldmine in terms of good quality information, and your folks play a big role in that. On the left, you see some of the key appointments and agency engagements that we've been involved in to support the counties. And there's three that I'll talk about. One is, we continue to spend a lot of time working with the PSPRS Board of Trustees. Counties across the state have made significant investments in paying down that debt. We are trying to do our part to make sure that your voice is being brought to various decisions that they're making to help steward that resource. And one of the great assets that we all have over at the system is Mr. Townsend, Administrator Townsend, who came out of this county. But if we go back where we were many years ago, the partnership has improved mightily, as has our ability to provide good quality information to that system. The second item I wanted to highlight relates to the deployment of the BEED grant and broadband infrastructure. We are collaborating with the 15 counties to connect with the executive on how we all work together to deploy those resources. Teams are working locally. We want to make sure that we do our part to engage as well. And so we have been appointed to the task force that the governor's created to work in that capacity. And we've been having meetings on permitting and other things. We'll continue to do that as we go forward. And the final key item I wanted to highlight here is about the Governor's Water Policy Council. So we're serving in that capacity. You all have been very active in developing good ideas to bring forward in that. And so that process is underway. And we're really excited about the progress that's occurring in there. And it's been fun to serve in it. So the next few slides are about the Research and Data Initiative. And so, as you know, we really use the organization to collect information, to analyze it, bring it to bear in terms of decision-making, and to try to support not just decisions at the local level, but the state as well. And we've been working diligently to build this mountain of information. We've got more than 4 million data points now. Steve, you'll remember going way back as we started to build this capacity many years ago. And it's really started to hit its stride under the leadership of our Analytics Director, Vanessa Fielder. And it's really, we're very proud of how we're bringing that to bear on the decisions or on the policies that we've been trying to analyze. What you see at the top are three tools that are available. The County Encyclopedia, the County Revenue Dashboard, and the Employment Dashboard. We continue to build out new tools. So what we'll be rolling out at the Policy Summit that we'll be having here in Coconino County is our probation dashboard. We'll be talking with the managers about that on Friday. We want to continue to build out this capacity because we think it'll continue to help all of us. At the same time, we have been involved in a series of research projects. This shares with you five of them. Most notably is in the middle, related to workforce recruitment and retention challenges. We were assigned legislatively to a PSPRS work group to look into workforce recruitment and retention in law enforcement. As part of that, we recognized that there was a lack of foundational data. And so our team reached out to the Board of Regions and secured an $800,000 grant to work with this work group to start studying this activity across the state. And that's been working out very well. Our team, it's not our project necessarily. It's the PSPRS Work Group's project. But we've been serving as a project manager to move this on. And the universities are all involved, so you can take a quick look at what the universities are doing. And we think it's a pretty significant effort. It also highlights how we're trying to build our partnership with the universities through ABO or additional research projects. And when we come together at the Legislative Summit or the Policy Summit, we'll not just recap some of the items that we already have ongoing, which are listed for you here. We'll talk about some new items that we're going to roll on. So moving into the legislative. As you all know, counties are very much linked with state statute, which means every time the legislature's in session, there's a lot of policy changes. This year was the longest session that we've had. And that's important because it means that new bills are not enacted until October 30th. And so what we're focused on now is implementing the laws. So we provided materials to all of the counties related to that. And we want to continue to work through that as folks need to put these new laws into practice. The balance of the presentation will highlight some key policy areas, but also talk about some context. So let me talk about the budget first. When we all met a year ago and we were talking about what this session might look at, we knew they were going to have a lot of resources for one-time expenditures. We also knew they weren't going to have a lot of ongoing money. And that's certainly how it played out. And the new executive partnered with the legislative leadership to figure out how to allocate the one-time money. And they stayed away from ongoing commitments. And the one-time money allocation was very interesting because in the, for the most part, members were given $20 or $30 million to earmarked projects that were important to them. And that's how the budget ultimately got designed. We, this slide shows you how $2.5 billion of one-time money was allocated in large buckets. And it won't surprise you where it went. Transportation, K-12, there was a small income tax rebate, school facilities, things like that. There were over 300 specific projects earmarked in that budget. Pretty remarkable. It's not something I've ever seen. What's very important here, if you look in fiscal year 2024 in the red box, the legislature basically spent all the cash that they had on the table. Going forward, they're projecting about just under an $8 million ending balance in fiscal year 2024. So that is starting to indicate that it's going to be a tight financial year going into the next session. And as the economy is slowing a bit, we're seeing that turn up in some of the numbers. So I think that's an important contextual item as we go forward. What we did here is we focused on mapping across the 15 counties some of these earmarked projects in transportation buckets, local water projects, and local distributions. And the projects that largely came up here, I know a project went through the city of Flagstaff. There were some payments for a road that had been put in a prior budget. But as you can see, that kind of process wasn't so much focused on what are regional priorities, but where specific members were allocating dollars. The next slide just shows a bunch of projects that went through down to counties across the state. Now, I wanted to highlight this a little bit because I talked about the allocation approach to how they negotiated the budget. And by having members identify specific projects and having a certain dollar amount to do that, it took off the table the ability to do big-ticket items. So things like our effort to pay down the EOR liability. This is the Closed Elected Officials Retirement Plan. This is a debt that is owed, and we have to pay for. The Chairman of Appropriations in the House, Representative Livingston, asked our organization to come up with a plan to pay that down more efficiently. We did that. It would have saved the taxpayers about $677 million had the state enacted it. But it would have cost the state about $400 million to pay that debt down. So you get the, you know, you get the benefit over time. Because of the approach that they took, big-ticket items like this couldn't get put in the budget because it would require all the members to prioritize this. So that's something that we were disappointed in and something that is to the taxpayers' detriment. And it's something we want to continue to look at going forward. We did advocate for resources to go in the Rural Broadband Accelerated Match Program and the State Match Advantage for rural transportation. That was really just to make sure dollars were squirreled away to support rural communities that were trying to access federal grants in this area. And we adopted six bills when we all met going into the session. These are the four that got through the process, some just basic government items. And I spoke earlier about our LPC. And I can't commend enough you for participating in that Legislative Policy Committee because a lot of the work that we do is on just dealing with bills that come into the process. And so we did have a very good year working with lawmakers to amend policies that we really had trouble with and, in the most part, defeat bills that we had concerns with. And so that was a very good collaborative effort for the 15 counties. This slide just shows you the policy areas we work in and where our team spent time in stakeholder meetings. Not a surprise to you, ranging from the basics of government to retirement tax policy and, of course, elections. So I thought I'd share this with you. This is the veto count this year, so that was kind of interesting to see, 143 vetoes. And when you deconstruct that, what you see is that overwhelmingly, the bills that were vetoed were partisan bills. And the governor said at the outset that she wanted to see greater collaboration across the aisle. So when things went up, strict party line, they were vetoed. There were a small subset of bills that were bipartisan that were vetoed for various policy reasons. Probably the most well-known was the Tamale Bill that everyone was talking about. But I imagine that'll come back in some capacity. But it did kind of highlight, you know, that the governor was sending a signal that she wants folks to work together and work problems out. And I will say that that context was useful because many proponents of bills that touched counties were very proactive in reaching out to us and saying, "How can we get you all to a spot where you're okay with this?" That was a very good result. These are just a list of bills of concern that we dealt with this year that likely will come back, but I won't spend much time on. This slide shows policy areas of bills that were enacted. And I wanted to put this in here for you because it shows the diversity of policy areas that we're all engaged in. But when you look into these, these are basic policy items. Things like extending the Good Samaritan laws or the Fatality Review Committee, making small modifications to administrative reviews or licensing and permitting, addressing confidentiality for elections officials. Nothing real controversial or problematic here. I will highlight in the lower left, though, HCR 2039, which is going to the ballot, which does change the state's ability to respond to emergencies with local governments because it creates conditions that pulls the legislature into special session in cases of emergency. Fire and flood were amended out of that. We raised a lot of concerns about that. As you might imagine, the issue here is the pandemic or other items that may be out there in the political sphere. But we're kind of concerned about this because you all know that emergencies are often just very, they're just basic things that have to be responded to. They need to be done by the executive entities in an efficient way. So we're going to have to monitor this. And again, it has to be passed by the voters for it to be enacted. We were pleased that they responded to the counties and amended out fire and flood. So I put this slide in here largely to just say, "Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman." Yes, sir. Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for the question. So that issue came about, it largely creates a nexus for the boards when they're working on reuse and recharge projects. And it came about from Pinellas County that was trying to work with a business that was locating in the area and had wastewater issues, recharge issues. And so it helped, gave them the authority for some grants they were pulling down. It's very basic language. Not entirely sure what it all means beyond that, but that's what that was about. Excellent question. But yeah, no, it wouldn't, it's not a regulatory. That's a good question. So this is my sensory overload slide designed to at least walk you down what we walked down for a little bit of the legislative session. There were a ton of bills related to election. Thirty-five of them got to the governor's desk. One was signed. But there was a ton of energy put into it. And I want to commend our partners over at AECO, their team working diligently, working with the election officials and the recorders to get information into the process. We worked in a very bipartisan fashion. We just look at what these bills mean to process and the ability to serve constituents. And we were grateful that ultimately the bills that would have been very disruptive were not passed. The governor is working on, or does have a task force, and will be coming out in the fall with election reform and efficiency items. And that's something we'll have to participate in as well. So this is the water slide. And again, a lot of words, but not a whole lot in terms of new policies for the counties. What I wanted to highlight here is the efforts to put $1 billion into WIFA for water augmentation. The third of that that was to be deposited this year was redirected for various water project earmarks. So I think that's important to know. We did not see a lot of bills move through the process that touched water regulatory structure, to your point, Mr. Chairman. All of that conversation is occurring in the Governor's Water Council. I'll just move on to a wrap slide here. These are the documents that we put out to help the counties implement new laws, understand the budget. And so these have all been distributed. If you are having trouble sleeping, I would commend them to you. Give them a read, you'll fall asleep readily. But for those of us who live at the legislature, these are great documents. And they identify everything you need to know. And as a final note, we are thrilled to bring your colleagues up here for our Policy Summit. This is the third time that we've had it up here. The prior two were outstanding, and I know this one's going to be fantastic as well. And I, yeah. And I do want to thank your team who's working on that. I am indebted to them. And I, and none of them scowled at me when I walked in the building, so that means that we're doing pretty well. I know it's a big lift, but please know that your colleagues and I are going to be incredibly grateful, and we're going to have a great time. But we have a bunch of policy items to review with you at that summit. And so we're preparing those. We're going to preview them again with the managers on Friday and our Board of Directors next Thursday. And then when we get up here, we'll have a facilitated conversation to adopt policies and set an agenda. So we're very excited about all of that. So that, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for all the time. I probably went overtime, but I do want to extend my appreciation again. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation and helping the public understand more of what CSA does and why it's so important and why we need to have our government affairs keeping track of what's going on in the state legislature and work with you. So thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Horstman?
Thank you so much for being with us here this afternoon, and thank you for the overview. We so appreciate all that CSA does for us here in Coconino County, but really across the state. And I don't know how we could manage, quite frankly, and be as effective as we are as county officials, as county supervisors without CSA and your advocacy and assistance. So first of all, I want to thank you very much for all your very hard work and your staff's very hard work. They're always available to us, and they're very pleasant to work with. So I want to thank you very much for that. So, and a question I do have has to do with terms of the budget, the Arizona School Voucher Program, and the cost of that program and how that's going to affect our state budget and availability of revenue going forward.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman and Supervisor, I should have touched on that when I was talking about the ending balance because the policy that the supervisor's highlighting is scoring at about $900 million as it's increased. And so it is a significant expenditure that's above forecast from when they enacted that bill. And we do think it's a cost driver that is going to affect the financial contacts next year. And so that is something that's going to come into play.
So you were saying we have like an $8 million balance? And with the cost of, you know, the $943 million for the voucher program, are we going to have deficit spending?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, a very good question. It's really hard to tell at this point because they do have a large rainy day. And they, I don't know the dollar amount that they increase their projections, so I'm sure there is some expanded projection piece there. And they do have tools at their disposal to deal with revenue shortfalls. But no one, you know, as we deal with revenue shortfalls caused by the economy, that's one thing. But when expenditures cause revenue shortfalls, that's a whole different thing. I think is what you're getting at. And so it is going to put pressure on the financial situation to some degree, for sure.
Are there any other questions or comments? Supervisor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Craig, thanks for coming up. Really appreciate it. And again, just speaking on behalf of the organization, a lot of times, our work is defensive for all the bills that go through. But in having a tight budget coming ahead, it'll make it more challenging. It speaks to the concept of EOR. We need a broader piece. We still need to have that conversation. But which year, how? A lot of times, we'll start out with what we know we need to do, but sometimes the year is right, sometimes the year isn't. But how do you keep that conversation going so we can get to the solution associated with it? I'm trying to, trying to think of, what was the alternative energy that Gross got?
It was the alt-fuels fiasco.
Yeah, yeah. It's early 2000s. That's what I'm thinking of when you're talking about the voucher piece. So they will have to, yeah, they tend to the budget in some legislative fashion with that. But more importantly, we look forward to it, love to host it. Unfortunately, I won't be there, but these guys will. So you got to let me know how they do, okay?
Thank you, Supervisor Horstman. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, you confused me with Supervisor Horstman.
I mean, yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. I think it is a trauma for the last time being called Mr. Chairwoman. Excuse me. Supervisor Baggay?
As always, thank you for being part of CSA and keeping us in line and, you know, keeping us updated and making sure that, you know, we understand, you know, what's really happening within the organization and also within the counties. So it's a large, a lot of counties that, you know, are really involved. And I want to thank my colleagues also, you know, for being part of it and providing input. And then lastly, you know, the board overall, you know, as far as really coming forth and, you know, challenging, taking on the challenge, you know, to secure funding and making sure that, you know, the less are vetoed and, you know, that we move forward with, you know, more dollars and deficits that we may be, that may be coming forward. So I'm just so happy that, you know, we're part of the CSA as a county and Coconino County. And certainly, all our staff here are very supportive. Without them, you know, we wouldn't be able to do our job and, you know, getting things down to the CSA, you know, to be talked about and to be dispersed and also to be acted on. So I'm so thankful that you're here this evening with us, board members. Thank you.
Yes, County Manager Peru?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to appreciate the CSA staff for supporting and staffing the County Managers and Administrators Group. So all of the county managers and administrators have, you know, we talk all the time, but CSA also provides the opportunity for us to meet monthly. And so it provides added synchronization and harmonization of all of our conversations. They also support other of our cohort groups in terms of our discussion because, you know, all of the counties have similar, if not very identical, positions. And so being able to provide the opportunity for all of our cohorts to collaborate and to communicate at the various levels is very important. So appreciation to CSA and the staff for supporting this important communication conduit. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Fowler?
So, you know, across the country, not, you know, not all counties are members. And we just have to be, in our state, we have 15 counties that are really working together and working with AECO, our other elected officials, and our towns and cities. And it's just really important that we have that and you pretty much coordinated that. And these research that were, that you have, that our organization is doing is really important, especially when it comes to really looking and working with all of the universities when it comes to public safety. And I just really think it's a good, really important research that's taking place. We've done research in the past, and it's really made a difference. Our job, main job here is to save ourselves from state legislators. And that's why I always tell people, because unfunded mandates is what gets us. You know, it looks like our unfunded mandates have increased again. So that impacts our budget. The state legislators will stand up there and say they balance their budget, but they kick that over to the counties, and we end up having to pick those up. So those unfunded mandates, it's just a lot of education that has to take place. And when there's a really divided legislators, then it's hard to get to them because they believe that they already know what they're doing. And so it's important that you and your staff are there on a daily basis trying to educate them. And we step in whenever we can. So just want to thank you. And I know that Greg and Keith and our staff are always working with you directly. So thank you.
It's really our pleasure. And Mr. Chairman members, thank you so much for your engagement in the association. It's really the supervisors and staff that make it strong collaboration. So I owe you a debt of gratitude for that.
Yeah, it's really good to know all the other supervisors and be able to pick up a phone and be able to talk to them. So, I mean, it's like that across the country also with NACO. We're very involved in NACO. The county managers have their own meetings and the State Directors Association at the national level. That's really important as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, well, in that case, thank you very much for being here. And I just want to reiterate what my colleagues always already said, which is that the value of CSA, besides doing the advocacy and providing education, is also the relationship building between different county supervisors and county staffs. And so we really appreciate your work and your leadership and look forward to collaborating moving forward. Thank you. Okay, now we will take a break and return at 6 o'clock for our regular board meeting. Meeting, or not adjourned, again. Meeting, or not adjourned, I guess, break.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. Okay, thank you. First off, as a reminder, if you're carrying a cell phone, computer, two-way radio, or any other kind of sound device, please silence it to minimize disruption in the meeting. And now we'll have a call to order. District one.
I'm present. Patrice Horstman, District one.
Herona Movaskas, District two, and current chair. District three.
Matt Ryan. Hello, everybody.
District four.
UDBG, District four supervisor.
District five.
Well, good evening, District five. Lena Fowler, thanks so much for joining us.
Thank you. And now can we please stand and pledge allegiance? Okay, thank you. Now it's time for a call to the public. So we will take public comments from those in the room first, and then take public comments from those who have joined virtually. Deputy Clerk Weber will explain how the public can provide comment.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. At this time, if there is anyone present in the room who would like to make a comment in person, please fill out an orange comment card on the table by the door and provide that comment card to me, or you can go to the podium. If you've joined the meeting virtually and would like to provide a comment, please hit the raised hand icon that will appear if you hover towards the bottom of your screen. It looks like a hand, and if you click on that, that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. If you've joined by telephone and would like to comment, please hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. And Chair Vasquez, we don't have anybody in person, but we do have one attendee that would like to speak.
Okay, then can we please promote that person and get that comment? And just a reminder that this call to the public is, any item spoken about this issue, we cannot discuss. We can only listen and possibly put on an agenda item in the future. But since it's not on our agenda, we can't discuss it beyond the comments. Thank you.
Okay, and we have a mark that has a hand raised and would like to speak. Mark, would you please unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Will you please state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Mark Olxleger, and we're 4272 North AA Ranch Road, which is directly across the street from the proposed tower. And my comments would be, I thought that the Board had made the correct decision, and I understand that they have repealed it, which is their right. But nobody in my neighborhood wants the cell tower there.
Excuse me, sir. I'm sorry. Your comments are for the public hearing? That is on the agenda, so if you could wait?
Sure. Sure, I can wait. I'd like to hear what the cell tower company has got to say on their appeal.
Yes, and that's the appropriate time for your comments. Right now, this is for things that aren't on the agenda. So if you could save those comments for when we get to the public hearing, that would be great.
Excellent.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I'm sorry for any confusion there.
Okay, no problem.
Are there any other public comments?
Chair Vasquez, I have no hands raised, and I've also checked our board's comments box, and there are no comments in that.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And so in that case, if there are no other public comments unrelated to tonight's public hearings, then we will continue on to number two on the agenda, which is consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation designating September 15th to October 15th, 2023, as Hispanic Heritage Month. And we have representatives from Human Resources here to present. Thank you.
From the Treasurers Office, oh, thank you, to present the proclamation. And then following the proclamation, I'll be happy to go over any events.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi. All right. Proclamation Designating Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is observed to celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of individuals whose ancestors came from Aztec and Mayan indigenous peoples, Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, Latin America, Central America, and South America. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos have enhanced and shaped our national character with century-old traditions while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. And whereas the Hispanic Heritage Observance began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting September 15th and ending on October 15th, enacted into law on August 17, 1988. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos are some of the earliest native residents of the southwestern United States, and Hispanics in Coconino County were amongst the first pioneers in Flagstaff and Coconino County, many working in the sawmill and railroad industry as an integral piece of establishing our mountain town of Flagstaff and the continued development of Coconino County.
And whereas the county and the Coconino County Board of Supervisors honor the contributions of Hispanic and Latino entrepreneurs, educators, activists, artists, engineers, scientists, and public servants who cultivate communities and pass on rich traditions, and whereas the National Council of Hispanic Employment Program Managers announced the 2023 Hispanic Heritage Month's observance theme. Todos somos, somos uno. We are all, we are one. Todos somos, somos uno. We are all, we are one. Coquenino County embraces this theme by recognizing cultural diversity as a core value of our organization, encouraging communities in Coquenino County to focus on equity, social justice, and actions that move our communities forward. Now therefore, we do hereby designate September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Coquenino County, and call upon residents to reflect on and embrace the diversity that strengthens us as a county, state, and nation. Signed and sealed this twelfth day of September, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you for that proclamation. Do we have any comment questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation before we have the questions or comments from the board?
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Horstman, second by Supervisor, Vice Chair Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Now, do we have any comments from any of the supervisors? Supervisor Horstman.
I'm sure we all want to comment. This is important, and thank you so much. It's great to see you both, and thank you for this really important proclamation. And, and needless to say, not only have the Hispanic Heritage Month something that we celebrate on a regular basis here in Coquenino County because of the large Latino and Hispanic population that have really made this county, not only in terms of pioneers, but even up to the present day. And even up here on the Board of Supervisors, we have had some incredible Hispanic leaders from Tony Gabbaldone to Tio Tachias to Liz Archuleta, not to mention our very own Chair Herona Mavascas. And so it's certainly extremely important for us to honor and recognize the variety of peoples and cultures we have here in Coquenino County. So thanks so much for bringing this forward. Really appreciate it.
Thank you Supervisor Horstman. Other supervisors? Supervisor Ryan.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Whoops. I'm learning to use the microphones as well here. And Arena, and his, uh, thank you for reading the proclamation. And as stated, we're, we're celebrating our cultural diversity, which we so want to do in Coquenino County, and really appreciate you coming forward and, and helping us with that. I look forward to, I'm sure Erica is going to provide us a list of many, many activities that are occurring throughout the month, and I hope everybody will take part in. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for reading the proclamation. And you know, as a Board of Supervisors, we don't just read the proclamation. Acknowledge that we encourage our public to really recognize the diversity within Coquenino County, the history in our county, to really know who we are as a people in our own region. And we, and, and as a board also, we have priorities that we follow, issues that impact our residents, and impact just the various groups in our, in our counties. Sometimes they're very specific. So we want to just make sure that with recognizing proclamations and being able to ask our public to really be recognized and appreciate the diversity that we have in the county, I think is so important. And thank you so much for your reading. I took a photo of you, so I'll send it to you. He looks, so anyway, I haven't seen Arena in a while, so it's so great to see, see you too. So anyway, thank you. Always, our HR department has so many programs. They roll out for each of the various cultures throughout the year, and just really want to thank the, the whole team for being so open and being so creative in these public education that we take on. So thank you so much.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler. Vice Chair Begay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Arena, for the proclamation, and also for coming forth and doing the proclamation. Being one of the first native residents and pioneers of, with her here in Flagstaff, yeah, the Hispanics and the Latinos, they contribute a lot of their rich traditions, you know, to, to Coquenino County with pride, and I think all indigenous people are like that. So I just want to say thank you. We certainly embrace the cultural diversity of this proclamation. And then the core, as the core of our organization, we need to stay focused on equity, social justice, and move forward together. And as a board member and of the Navajo tribe, I proudly support the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation as read. We are all, we are one.
Thank you, Vice Chair Begay. And I'd just like to say thank you for bringing this proclamation. It's always great to be able to celebrate the different diversity in our, in our county. And this time's always a special time as being Latino and being part of this, this tradition, being able to celebrate it and share it with the community, and celebrate the different diversity in our county is really important. And it's really important that we take the time to learn about the contributions from Latinos and Hispanics in Coquenino County throughout history. And I know you're going to share a whole bunch of different cool events that will help enlighten us a little bit of some of the contributions to our county. And so again, just thank you for bringing this to us, and we look forward to celebrating it with you at these various events. Thank you.
The backing up is the hard part. We made it. All right. Well, it's definitely a family affair, our, our Heritage Lunch and Learns. And we're so, so lucky to have so many people presenting in this, in this month, including Chair Vasquez, who will be presenting again this year, talking about the Mayan calendar on a Zoom presentation. So thank you for doing that on October fourth. And also Chair's wife, Alejandro Vasquez, is going to present on October twelfth, talking about the culture of Mexico to the US, which will be fantastic. We also have Lorenzo Gomez from the Treasurers Office speaking. Treasurer Sarah Benatar will be talking about her Guatemalan roots. And Abel Contreras, Arena's brother, will be speaking on, on October fifth. We also have some community partners that will be presenting, including Johnny Anaya, who will be having an in-person presentation on Wednesday, September twentieth. Nuestres Reyes will be presenting on September twenty-seventh, talking about their organization, also in person. And then we have Alexander Garcia, talking about a community involvement on October tenth. And Kristen Crigido of the City of Flag Arts and Beautification, talking about Hispanic art in the community on Zoom. And there's also a couple Lunch and Learn kind of YouTube videos that Arena will be hosting. So lots of different events, lots of different days of the week, hopefully to try and get as many of our employees and community members, families and friends to be able to join us for part of this celebration as we take a moment to pause and have an educational experience that makes us have a different perspective and allows us to really enjoy this Heritage Month fully. So celebrating that diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging that is so important here at Coquenino County.
Thank you. Really appreciate that. And again, we just want to thank you and your team for all the hard work to put this together and look forward to some great presentations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation designating September twenty twenty-three as Suicide Prevention Month. And now we'll have Ms. Kim Musselman, Director of HHS, to introduce the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez and supervisors. And hopefully, we can also be having Erica Shaw being promoted and Rene Herrera. Okay, great. Thank you. I just wanted to let you all know we're, we're pleased to bring this proclamation forward. Erica Shaw, our Division Manager over our Recovery and Resiliency Division, and is going to be joining us remotely to help read the proclamation. And as is Rene Herrera. Rene is one of our epidemiologists at HHS. And Rene serves as the Chair of our Suicide Review Board. And so they both are here tonight to read the proclamation. So I'm going to turn it over to them, and then just like to add a couple things at the end after the proclamation has been presented. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Vasquez and Board of Supervisors. Without further ado, we will read the proclamation designating September twenty twenty-three as Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas our country observes National Suicide Prevention Month in September to raise the visibility of mental health and proactive suicide prevention resources in our community, continue to de-stigmatize suicide prevention and mental health care, and help connect people with the appropriate support services to prevent further loss from death by suicide, and...
Whereas we acknowledge and honor the lived experience of attempt survivors and lost survivors, and...
Whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among individuals between ages ten and thirty-four, with more than forty-eight thousand people dying by suicide annually in the United States, and...
Whereas there are an average of one hundred and thirty-two suicides completed daily, and each one exposes at least one hundred thirty-five other people to the trauma of loss, with over six point nine million newly bereaved individuals each year, including friends, service members, family, social media connections, and neighbors, and...
Whereas we acknowledge the interconnectedness of an individual's lived experience, social and community context, and broader social determinants of health as they impact mental health, and recognize the importance of addressing all of the social determinants of health to improve well-being and mental health, and...
Whereas many of the individuals impacted by suicide, including lost survivors, never received supportive services as a result of significant prejudices and discrimination.
Whereas sharing personal experiences of living with mental illness or the loss of a loved one to death by suicide can reduce barriers and normalize the process of individuals seeking mental health treatment, and...
Whereas Health and Human Services remains committed to optimizing the health and well-being of our residents, supporting the recovery and resiliency of all of our community members, and...
Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-three as Suicide Prevention Month, pledging to continue supporting Coquenino County Health and Human Services and our community partners as they expand access to behavioral health care, disrupt stigma around mental health, and continue finding innovative ways to promote mental health and will be signed and sealed this twelfth day of September, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you for that proclamation. Can I get a motion to approve this proclamation? I have a motion from Vice Chair Begay. Do I have a second? Thank you Supervisor Ryan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, do we have any comments from the board?
If I may, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and this is so important. If you take a look at where our focus has gone over the past few years, we knew there have been gaps in mental health support. We've been working towards that. And, and as expressed in the proclamation, a very serious situation where we do have increased suicide rates. The most important thing with this proclamation, I believe, is we're providing the opportunity for people to access services, to seek an opportunity to reach out and, and be there, and, and have a place for people to go. So I appreciate Erica and Rene for you reading the proclamation, helping us bring this to the attention of many out there, and, and hopefully we can help each other. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Any other supervisors? Comments? Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, and, and I agree with what Supervisor Ryan indicated. You know, one of the things that we as a Board of Supervisors did, and quite frankly, with the leadership and direction of HHS and our County Manager's Office, is to really put an emphasis on mental and behavioral health and to use our ARPA funds to really advocate for an extension of our mental and behavioral health programs here in Coquenino County. And I'm so proud of the work that they have done and the way they have been able to weave in our nonprofits, weave in the various departments here in Coquenino County, all for the purpose of the, of really advancing our mental and behavioral health programs here for our residents in Coquenino County. So I think it's important to acknowledge the hard work that is being done by Coquenino County in the leadership and direction. And obviously, you know, the suicide, and the suicide rate here in Coquenino County, which is higher than the national average, is something that we all have to address. We all need to be part of that solution. So thank you for that.
Thank you Supervisor Horstman. Any other comments from the board? Vice Chair Begay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a community effort. Everyone needs to, you know, really work together on, on this so that, you know, we, we, we have to really look at prevention in ways, how we can deal with, you know, helping people out there, what their needs and why they're, you know, suicidal. And so I just want to thank everyone that had, is working in this field, and, you know, just really going to the core of trying to help the people from preventing, so they can prevent suicidal attempts that, you know, on behalf of the, who they're talking to. So I just want to say thank you so much for bringing this proclamation. And, you know, it means a lot, and it's not, it doesn't, it's not choosing certain individuals or anything like that. But, you know, this is a whole, it's a whole country, you know, that, that's dealing with this issue here. So I just want to say thank you again, you know. It's something that we, we have to keep working at, and I'm glad that my colleagues here have supported, you know, funds, you know, to, to curtail a lot of these things that happen in, in suicide awareness and things like that. So I know I think the staff are carrying out those duties and responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Begay. Supervisor Fowler.
And people that are, have mental or health issues, they have a mental block, they don't realize that. They go into a situation where they don't even know where they're at at the time. You have to be there for them. You have to answer the call when the call comes. It's not a call that you can ignore. And we create all these programs. A lot of times, many times, that we don't, the programs don't reach them. And that's where we, as a board and our county, across the, every program, every department that we have, all of our employees are working with that every day, trying to help people. It is so important. We try to do as much as we can, but at the same time, though, just people in general, family members, friends, we all have to be there, always be there. And many times, they don't realize that they're hurting you. They can hurt people that they love the most and don't even realize they're doing that until years later. So we just have to be patient and, and work every day to help people from where they're at and bring them along. And there, those happy days come, and it's really a happy day. And that's what we're all working towards every day. Even our own personal, personally, we all have our ups and downs. So I always say, take care of yourselves as, because we are so work-driven, gotta have that family life balance as well. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler. Thank you Supervisor Fowler. And I would just like to say first off, thank you for the proclamation to highlight this issue in our county. The fact that our suicide rate in Coquigno County is higher than the national average is definitely a concern and part of the reason why we've dedicated so much effort and so much funding towards mental health services, because we really need to create these supports for our community members. You know, these people falling between the cracks is because up until now, we haven't had some of those services available in the right way. And so we're in that, going in that direction. We still have work to do, but it's so important to highlight the issue and how it's affecting people in Coquigno County. You know, it's, it's really all about a community and making sure that we're in this together and that people don't feel alienated or forgotten. And so these services, these resources, we need to share them with folks to let them know that it's available. Because sometimes people feel lost, as was mentioned before, and they don't know where to get help or how to get services. And so, you know, part of our county's job and Health and Human Service in providing those services is making it more accessible to our community. And I feel we're making, we're going in the right direction. We're making strides. We still have work to do. But we're, we're going in the right direction, and this proclamation is part of that, is just bringing that awareness and that advocacy for suicide prevention. So thank you for you, Kim, and your team for all your hard work, and look forward to continuing this conversation about how we can continue to provide better mental health services for our community. Thank you.
And Chair, if I could just say a couple of things specific to people being able to access services. I think it's important to note that, you know, there's a lot of efforts going on in our state, in our country around reducing the stigma. You know, many of you talked about that, around seeking help, that it is, you know, that reaching out for support is a sign of strength, not weakness, and we need to be able to share that. It's important to remind our kids and ourselves that it takes courage to ask, to speak up about your feelings, and that there are many safe places available to get that help and for people to listen. I did just want to share as the reminder, for anyone who's listening and for all of those that, you know, there are dedicated professionals, you know, we have the nine eight eight number that anyone, you're just a phone call, a text, a chat away from getting somebody to listen. And I just wanted to share that publicly. If you are feeling overwhelmed, sad, or just need someone to talk to, please don't hesitate to reach out and dial nine eight eight. If you dial nine eight eight to speak to a representative, there's going to be some short recorded messages. If you press one right away, you're going to get to a Veterans Crisis Line. If you press three during the menu options, you are going to access the LGBTQ plus for specific support. You can text nine eight eight for text-based services. So if you don't want to talk, but you talk best with your fingers when you are texting, that is an option. You can visit nine eight eight lifeline dot org backslash chat to chat in English. You can visit nine eight eight lifeline dot org backslash E S backslash chat to chat in Spanish. You can also, if you're a teen, you can text the teen lifeline, which is six oh two two four eight eight three three six, or six oh two two four eight teen. And there are trained volunteers that man that and staff that call line that are age fifteen to nineteen. So if you're a young person, they answer calls and texts between three and nine P M., and then all the other hours, that teen line is staffed by Solari, which is one of the agencies in our state with adults that staff that line outside of that. So I just wanted to share that. Again, I want to thank our staff at HHS and the board and all of our departments and the manager's office for the support, the ongoing work that's being done, and to all of our partners in the private nonprofit sector, all of those, everyone has a drive to help address our youth and our adult and mental health and behavioral health needs in our community. So thank you very much for the time and letting us bring this proclamation forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, our Board of Supervisors Consent Agenda. All matters under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by a single motion. Are there any items that board members want to consider separately?
Mr. Chair, none separate, but I note to remove item nineteen.
Thank you. So moved. So can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items four through twenty-three minus? Oh.
I think we're supposed to remove Treasurers.
Number six?
Are we separating the treasurer's on? She'll speak to item number six, so we'll be separating item number six. We'll also be separating item fifteen and item nineteen. The rest of the Consent Agenda, Mr. Chairman, per your motion, can proceed.
Okay, so I'll start over with that motion. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Items four through twenty-three minus number six, number fifteen, and number nineteen. So moved. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll go to number six. We have our county treasurer.
Yes, Madam Treasurer should be promoted, and she is with you. So, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, Madam Treasurer, to you.
The floor is yours, Mrs. Chair.
Thank you, Chairman Vasquez and members of the board. Before you, as a resolution for us to directing the treasurer to collect property taxes, there is a tax rule, and that tax rule ID is specifically twenty twenty-three dot zero 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 seven nine. So that's a specific tax rule for us to begin collecting. The process is, once you adopt tax rates, then there will be a resolution giving us, directing us to collect the taxes, the rules and delivered. We then process the tax rule, and then from there, we will begin the process with the printing and mailing tax notices, which our goal is to do that by next Friday, September twenty-second, barring any, any fun, fun things that might come up. So that's our process. We're getting ready for tax season, and always appreciate the support. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? All right, in that case, can I get a motion to approve item number six?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Number six passes, and we move on to number fifteen.
Mr. Chair, we should have on Matt Malik from Information Technology to present this item. So to, you can recognize Mr. Malik, and he can present.
Thank you, Mr. Malik. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez, Vice Chair Brigade, and Distinguished Board. I appreciate the time to just spend a little bit discussing this grant that we're looking to get approved. In late twenty twenty-two, the County Manager's Office had submitted a request to Senator Senema's office for congressional discretionary funds for digital transformation funds. We did receive notification of a potential award of a million dollars with a twenty-five percent match. However, due to some difficulties, the deadline was only two and a half weeks away. We did a review of all our projects for digital transformation, and we found a project that actually was in a prepared state for grant consideration. And this project was actually a recorder's project that we had worked with specifically Alicia Henry, where we were looking to do some digital transformation, but unfortunately, the project was too expensive for the funding that we had available. With this grant, we would be able to do this, and it includes three specific components of the project. One is that we would digitalize one point nine million images that are currently stored on microfilm, and we would convert them to a PDF form, and those would be imported into the recorder's in-house in the public accessible online system. Additionally, we would purchase a book scanner for capturing images from the four hundred and twenty, four hundred and twenty books that the recorders currently store in their vault. Those items are not in any type of digital format. They're stored on books, and there's some difficulties for the general public to access those images. And lastly, we would use the money to upgrade our server setup. And the idea here is to increase the efficiency of the system to be able to handle the additional images, and it would also improve our disaster recovery to make sure those images stay solid. For the twenty-five percent match, Patty Hanson has authorized the funding to come from the Recorder's Storage and Recovery Funds. Now, these are state statute-specific use funds, and the fund is specifically funded by the recording fees. This project would actually be eligible to use that twenty-five percent match. We are also going to be tracking labor for, to manage the program and for the book scanning to report to the grant administrator. By doing all these things, there are some specific benefits that I'd like to draw. The first one is, this will actually have every recorded document in the history of Coquigno County to finally be available to the public through a web-based portal. This is the first time that that would ever happen. Additionally, the public would no longer have to be required to make reservations and come to the Recorder's Office for research on documents stored on microfilm or books. This would provide access to those who have never had the ability to come into the Recorder's Office, such as our disabled, our immune compromised, or those lacking mobility. Additionally, those out of state really don't have an access to these funds. So this would open up a whole benefit to the general public. Additionally, once everything is converted and imported into a digital system, we would be moving the microfilm to the state archives down in Phoenix. This would actually reduce the amount of storage that the recorders need for their items. Lastly, as a large benefit to the public, is that the images themselves would be easier to search because it would be more efficient, because all the images will have a series of keywords that people can search by. Currently, right now, if you go in and you ask for a book, you'll get a book, and you'll have to go through each one. This will provide a large boon to people to find the documents that they're looking for. If the board accepts the request, accept the grant, the county will be able to complete approximately one point three million dollars worth of projects and upgrades. The remaining funds that are associated with this are the estimated labor costs in order to complete the multi-year project, and this is estimated to last three years to transfer all the four hundred and twenty books into a digital format. So at this time, I'd like to thank the board for your time, and I'd also like to thank Patty Hanson, Matt Fowler, Helen Castella, and Alicia Henry for their support. Also, I'd like to thank the National Archives and Recorder's Administration and Senator Senema for this grant opportunity. Is there any questions?
Thank you for that presentation on this item. It's really exciting that we have the opportunity to receive a grant like this and to put in a program like this. Are there any comments from the board?
Just comment. We see this about every budget, so it's really great that we've had the opportunity to have the grant to finally get this done, which is wonderful.
Supervisor Fowler?
What an amazing project. You know, just digitally to be able to archive everything and have it available for the public. You know, that is just absolutely amazing. We don't have to wear gloves or anything, just look at it. So, or breathe on it, you know, so this is amazing. What amazing project. So thank you so much, and thank you for the whole team for, for working on this project. It's been coming for a while. So thank you so much. It's wonderful to know it's done. It's on the way.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler. Any other comments? Vice Chair Brigade?
I just want to say thank you and job well done. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Horstman.
Well, unless other comments, I'd make a motion to accept this.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We have a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malik. Next item is number nineteen, and I'll refer to our county manager to discuss where we're going with nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The action, proposed action this evening was to approve the transfer of assets to the Cooperative Extension Service. Staff is still working on this project with the County Attorney's Office, so we would like to push the item to October third.
Okay.
So no, no action necessary. We'll just note it for the record.
No action. Okay, thank you. In that case, I do believe we are done with our Consent Agenda for the evening. Now we need to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors, I have a motion to resolve as the Flood Control Board of Directors. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, we are now the Flood Control Board of Directors. Now we have a consideration and possible action to approve Amendment number eleven to C M R twenty twenty-three dash one oh six, the Schultz Pipeline Flood Mitigation on Forest Watershed Restoration Project Amendment number eleven, which provides for construction services on the Campbell Watershed for a grant, for a total guaranteed maximum price of one million three hundred and sixty-five thousand thirty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. Do we have anybody to present on this item?
It's a consent agenda.
Oh, that's okay. All right, what I meant to say is, does anybody want to pull this item?
I would move, though, that we accept the Consent Agenda from the Flood Control District.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. No discussion needed. All right, can I get a motion to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors? I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Now, can I have a motion to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, there are three items on the Health District Consent Agenda. Do any members want to separate the item or unitem? No? Okay, in that case, may I have a motion to approve the Health District Consent Items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, do I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, now it's time to start our public hearing. The next two items are public hearings. Prehearing will have the staff present first, then the applicant will present. I will then open the public hearing and ask for comments from the public. At that time, Deputy Clerk Weber will provide instructions on how to provide comments in person and virtually. First, we'll start with the staff's presentation and then the applicant's presentation. The first public hearing is a consideration and possible adoption of Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten and Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-seven, approving a change of zoning regulations to provide for modified R M dash twenty slash A and modified C H, and I'm not sure what the acronyms are for, but C H dash ten thousand standards, where C H dash ten thousand standards currently apply with approval of revised master development plan, a eighty-four lot subdivision preliminary plot on eight point five, eight point five eight acres zoned for a planned community. The property is located east of Pilot Travel Center and Best Western Hotel and north of Shadow Mountain Drive in Belmont at twelve three twenty and twelve zero five zero West Shadow Mountain Drive, and is identified as assessors parcel numbers two hundred and three dash forty-seven dash zero one zero zero one R, two zero three dash forty-seven dash zero zero six B, and two, two hundred and three dash four dash zero zero six C, two hundred and three dash forty-seven dash zero zero one N, and two thousand and three, two hundred and three dash forty-seven dash zero zero one Z. The applicant is Tim Campbell of Finesse Properties, Queen Creek, Arizona. And I'll hand it over to Planner Bob Short to present.
And this should be pointed out, this is in District Three.
Yes, all our public hearings seem to come from District Three, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Loading the PowerPoint.
It's getting there. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, Chair Vasquez, members of the board. I'm Bob Short, I'm Principal Planner at Community Development. In this case, is the Shadow Mountain Phase Two, uh, subdivision. It is ZC twenty-two, zero, zero, two, and SUV twenty-two, zero, zero, three. In this case, the property owners are Shadow Mountain and Hughes LLC of Flagstaff and SMB Two LLC of Queen Creek, Arizona. The applicant is Tim Campbell of Queen Creek. The location of the property is in North Belmont Commercial Area and Activity Center. Excuse me, and the current zoning is PC Plan Community with CH ten thousand standards applied. Size of this property, this is all of the property commercial and, uh, resident subdivision is eight point five eight acres. And the request in this case is a change of zoning regulations in the PC Zone from CH ten thousand standards to modified RM twenty-eight and modified CH ten thousand standards. And that's with approval of the Master Development Plan. It is also a preliminary subdivision flat, approval of eighty-four lot townhouse development, and a development agreement is also included in this packet, uh, to provide for off-site traffic improvements. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. It is in Belmont. On the north side of Belmont, known as North Belmont, right next to the Pilot Travel Center. This is an aerial photo, uh, and you can see on this, the, uh, the original Shadow Mountain is in the middle right here. It is currently being developed and mostly developed. This is the proposed new subdivision. Uh, to the right, that's Shadow Mountain Phase Two, and to the left, you'll see Shadow Mountain Hughes Retail Plaza. These are some photos. Actually, these are from last January, and this is presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The one on the left is the, uh, is the subdivision development, and the one on the right is the commercial development. And this is the master development plan. Again, you see Shadow Mountain Village Phase One in the middle, Shadow Mountain Village Phase Two on the right, and the retail center and self-storage on the left. And these are the modified RM twenty-eight and CH ten thousand standards. The, uh, RM twenty-eight standards are in the table, and these are the standards that make this a, that are needed to, to allow for a townhome development. The modified CH ten thousand standards are simply for landscaping, mostly for the self-storage development. This is the subdivision preliminary flat. This is kind of laid on site, so to your right, you'll see it is north, and that is, uh, National Forest. To the east is also National Forest, uh, to the west, which is up on this map, is, uh, Shadow Mountain Phase One, and to the south is Shadow Mountain Drive. And you'll see on this, along the, uh, east and north boundaries, there is an eight-foot path. This is a public pathway, uh, uh, for, open to the public and also provides access to the National Forest. This is, uh, the site plan for the development. You'll note on the site plan that these are, uh, these are, these buildings are from three units to five units. Uh, on the site plan on the right, in the upper right corner-ish, there is a, a park, and that will be an extension of the park from the original Shadow Mountain Development. This is the landscape plan for the Shadow Mountain, uh, preliminary flat development. And this is the lighting, fence, and signage plan. You'll see the monument sign that says Shadow Mountain Village. That's already in place. And these are some, uh, some design standards for lighting and for fencing as well. And this is, uh, these are design standards for the park enlargement. Uh, you can see there is a Ramada and then, uh, some other items, a bench and some other items. This is basically how the park would look when developed. This is the housing design. I've only got one particular color here. The Planning and Zoning Commission actually approved about seven different colors, uh, color standards. This is the one that shows the front for a five-unit, uh, building. And this is the garage side. And this is a, an end unit, showing a different color. This is a picture from the existing Shadow Mountain Phase One development, so it shows you how the, the, the new housing will look as well. Under a different color, you can see the fencing on that. You can see they each have like a nice little front patio. Uh, note that the front looks out on the sidewalk, which sometimes looks out on the park, depending on where you are in the development, or it can also look out on the National Forest, and it has the views of the peaks as well. The garage side is where the street is. So it's a new urbanist-type development. This is a, the site plan for the retail development. It also shows landscaping and some design elements. And this is the, uh, the, I, the elevations of the commercial development. This is also approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, under the design review. And this is the site plan for the, uh, self-storage units. You can also see landscaping on this. You can see some design elements and some colors and lighting and landscaping. And these are the design of the buildings, also approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And this slide shows, uh, some compliance with the comprehensive plan. These are some, uh, policies in comprehensive plan. Public safety policy two, uh, requires adequate emergency services and access routes. The subdivision has a fire station right across the street, so it has emergency services. It also has at least two, um, access routes out of the subdivision. Uh, then there is also the land use and growth goal, which, um, indicates that there should, we should ensure a range of housing choices and a variety of communities that are well-designed in terms of character, natural environment, and availability of service. This is a kind of different, not, it's a little bit of a unique type housing. It is, um, not a, no, it can't be defined as affordable, but certainly in the lower range in this county. And then, of course, land use growth policy seven encourages subdivisions of lot splits. This subdivision is also within the, uh, Flagstaff Regional Plan area. And this slide shows some, some, uh, compliance with policies in the Flagstaff Area Regional Plan. Uh, encourages activity centers and corridors to provide housing of various types, especially attached in multifamily across a wide range of price points. And as you can see, this is a multifamily housing. It is attached as well. It also can, uh, indicates to consider the compatible integration of residential uses and proposed employment centers to reduce vehicle trips and commute times, which this is part of an employment center. And it indicates that, uh, you should incorporate neighborhood support, retail, and other commercial uses with new and re-innovated employment centers. Uh, this does incorporate these retail uses within the neighborhood. And then this also, um, hits on a lot of cylinders for the Belmont Area Plan. Uh, some of the same things, I won't read all of these, but pretty much kind of along the same lines. Um, access to the forest. Development should be in an area where services are provided, and they all, they are all here. Sewer, water, electric. And also, uh, the policies in the Belmont Area Plan concerned with land use and growth. It says within the Rural Activity Center, mixed-use development, combining residential with neighborhood-supporting commercial is strongly supported, which is exactly what this is. Policy ten says restaurants, neighborhood grocery, retail stores should be the preferred type of business in North Belmont. That's exactly what this is. And, uh, number eleven says mixed-use commercial development in a rural activity center should be of a scale and, and character compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood in Belmont. And this is obviously in the right scale, and it fits right into the Belmont area. In terms of, uh, public safety, this is a very walkable neighborhood and also with connections back to other neighborhoods in Belmont and to the commercial area. This is the Belmont Future Land Use Map. You can see circled up there the Shadow Mountain Site, the kind of candy cane colored area that is the activity, uh, part of the activity center, and that's where this, uh, the Shadow Mountain Two, uh, subdivision is. Right next to that is a brown area, kind of a tannish brown area that is a commercial area, which is where the retail is. Terms of, uh, citizen participation, property owners within a thousand feet of the subject property were notified. That's about two hundred property owners, and they were invited to a virtual meeting held on January twenty-second, twenty-six, two, twenty, twenty-two. The applicant reports that seven people provided questions and comments. Most expressed support for the project or aspects of the project. Some were concerned about different things like emergency access, impacts of the water system, and of course, future development in the area. It is a rapidly developing, developing area. These are the findings for a zone change. Those have been addressed in the staff report. If you have any questions about those, we can discuss those. These are the findings for a planned development zone change. Uh, they're kind of redundant with, uh, with the zone change, but those are also addressed in the staff report. And these are the findings for preliminary flat, also addressed in the staff report. Staff does recommend that one condition be removed from the resolution, and this is because, uh, there were delays caused by the process of determining the applicant's onsite traffic improvement obligations. This is quite a long process. And this long process has made it, uh, this condition untenable, and the applicant has requested that it be removed. And you can see the condition there, which was meant to, uh, to help with the development of the mixed-use, use development in this case. Uh, the Resolution twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three, forty-seven has been renumbered to take out that, that condition. And with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission affords a recommendation of approval of ZC twenty-two, zero, zero, two, and SUV twenty-two, zero, zero, three to the board with the recommended conditions. There are two motions required for this. The first one is to approve twenty-two, zero, zero, two, uh, which is to change the change of zoning regulations to approve the revised master development plan and modified RM twenty-eight and modified CH ten thousand zoning standards. And that would be with approval of Ordinance twenty twenty-three, ten. And the second one is to approve SUV twenty-two, zero, zero, three, the eighty-four lot subdivision preliminary flat. And that would be with approval of Resolution twenty twenty-three, forty-seven. And with that, I'll take any questions from the board.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions, uh, from the board at this time? Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Bob, I, I was kind of surprised by, uh, uh, when I looked at the conditions. Twenty-two isn't a typical condition that we would put in, uh, an approval process, uh, but, you know, put the question back to the department, is that, isn't that true? I mean, I, no, it hasn't happened in the past, but I can answer.
No, it's not a typical, it's not a typical condition. I think the purpose of it was to, if, if you look back at, uh, the original, uh, Shadow Mountain Phase One, at that, at that time, the applicant, um, did propose mixed-use development. Uh, but then that entire subdivision was developed without the mixed use. So when they came to, uh, up with, uh, Phase Two, it was felt that that needed to be included at that time. Now, as we've worked with the developers, they definitely are moving forward with that commercial development now. So we don't see any reason for that condition at all.
Yeah, I, I would consider, uh, it's, it's a different burden that we wouldn't typically put on, uh, a development like this, so, uh, yeah. Appreciate the discussion associated with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Vice Chair Bregay.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. On page twenty-seven of your citizen participation, you mentioned, um, some concerns that were brought up about emergency access, impacts of the water system, and future development in the area. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that and how you dealt with that?
Uh, so that was brought up at a neighborhood meeting. And, uh, the applicant is here. They may be, he may be able to address that. But it, um, there is always concern with water, you know, in, in any, in many locations throughout the county, including Belmont. In this case, uh, I think there is adequate emergency access for this particular subdivision, but it's been an issue that's come up a few times, that the community as a whole doesn't have another outlet. So I think it, it was related to that likely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions at this time?
I'm going to reserve mine until after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you for your presentation, and now, next up, uh, the applicant, uh, has the opportunity to present if they choose so. Okay? Okay, uh, in that case, we will move on to public hearing. So we'll open up the public hearing, uh, all speakers. Please remember, remember to state your name in place of residence. When you're called to speak on, announce your name. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please make sure that your comments are directed to the topic. Deputy Clerk Weber will please, please explain how those here in person and those virtually can provide public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to make a comment who is in person, please fill out an orange comment card on the table by the door when you enter and provide that to me or take it to the podium. If you've joined the meeting virtually and would like to provide a comment, please hit the raised hand icon. It will appear if you hover towards the bottom of your screen. It looks like a hand, and if you click on that, that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. If you've joined by telephone and would like to comment, please hit star nine, and that'll raise your hand and notify us you would like to speak. And Chair Vasquez, I have no hands raised? And no comments in the board? Comments stand by.
Okay, thank you. And, yes, uh, Ms. Moser.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. Um, Deputy County Attorney Abby Cook is here. She's been, um, involved in some negotiations with the applicant since your packets were produced. When she initially reviewed this item, she had some concerns about the uncertainty of some of the payments that would be made by the builder. So they have negotiated some alternate language from what was in your packet. And if the board is interested in, in hearing that as an alternate to what's contained in the, in the, in your packets, she's prepared to, to talk to the board about that.
Would the board like to hear that updated language? Yes, we would like to hear that updated language, please.
And as a follow-up, I, you know, I would ask the applicant if they understand the suggested modifications there.
Chair Vasquez?
Yes.
May I interrupt just for a second? If we don't have any public comment, can we close the public hearing? Are you prepared for that?
Yes, we'll close the public hearing now if we do not have any public hearing or public comments available. But we will go ahead and clo- close the public hearing and then we'll continue on with the new updated.
Can I, can I ask that we keep the public hearing open until we have the full report provided before us?
Yes, that's definitely a good idea. Okay, so the public hearing is still open until after we have this clarification of the updated language. The floor is all yours.
Thank you. So we just updated, in the development agreement, we updated section five point four, which is written regards to the partial payments for the off-site road improvements. It's on page five of the actual agreement. It's page. Section five point four. And it'll be the last sentence of. Yeah, I, I do actually have the page.
I believe it's page four, under development, developers obligation.
Page five of the agreement.
Well, the last line is on page five. That's on page four, finishes on page five.
Which would be six, page sixty-five in the.
There you go.
Okay. Yes, page sixty-five in our packet.
It would be, the updated version would be in your email that you received yesterday. Yes, from Jess. So this one that's in the agenda is the old version, and then the updated version is in your email. But I can just go through the changes. The changes were mostly just clarification and grammar. The only substantive one was the last sentence again on five point four. And that pretty much just makes sure that the county will end up receiving the full funds for the subdivision project. In other words, the full payment will be received within ten years of the effective date of the agreement. And the reason for ten years is that, as I understand it, the project on the county side would probably not begin for ten to fifteen years.
If, if I can, so is that instead of twenty years?
No, that's a different provision.
Okay.
So this is the, yeah, this just has to do with the partial payments, the alternatives to full cash payment. We're just making sure that the developer ends up having to pay the county in full eventually.
Supervisor Horstman?
Oh.
Okay. Is it five point four?
Section, yeah.
Okay, so it says alternatives to full cash payment for the Shadow Mountain Village Commercial Center shall be as follows, one, then it goes two. And can you tell us where that cha- that change would be?
Yes, it's the last sentence of that, so it has to do with the subdivision project.
The last sentence, starting with this obligation shall be tied to the land as a lien on the subject property?
No, so it'll be on page five of the development agreement.
The one that says one, a fee.
Number one, a fee?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. A fee shall be provided for a single-family dwelling, and then what's the language, the new language say?
The entire payment shall be paid in full within ten years of the effective date of this agreement.
I don't know if I got an, an email with changed language.
Okay.
FYI. So, okay, so page five that says follows, then number one, a fee of three thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars may be provided upon the issuance of each building permit for a single-family dwelling, payment in full within ten years?
Uh, yes, of the effective date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, are there any other questions regards, regards to the updated language? Supervisor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and Abby, so this is a discussion that you have with the, the applicant?
No, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and zoning?
Yeah.
Is the applicant aware of this?
Yes.
Okay. Can, could actually, if we could. And please state your name.
Darren Smith, owner of Shadow and Hughes LLC. And yes, I've reviewed it and we've agreed, me and Tim Campbell.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments regarding updated language? Deputy County Manager Bertolson?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this was a development agreement that we as staff negotiated with the developers for transportation improvements in the area. We know that they're with the development that's taking place over the past twenty-plus years in the area. There are traffic impacts. The truck stop is located there as well as many other residential developments. And then with this development with the dwelling units as well as the commercial component of the development. So what this development agreement does, it requires the developer to contribute to the transportation improvements in the area. And so we'd like to thank Darren and the developers for working with us on that. It was, has been a lengthy process and sometimes a bit difficult to work through, but we were able to come up with this development agreement. And we're, we're really, as a, as a county, thankful for that partnership. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the updated language?
I, I do have a, a question, and more broadly. While I'm, I'm looking at an approval of the changes zoning, are two different motions that we have. Was thinking that. I have to double check. I'm getting lost. So is that in? Yeah, do we have it as a, do we need to note that more specifically as the development agreement approving that in item number one?
Yes.
Okay, not just this new language, that we are, we are also approving the development agreement?
Yes, you're approving the updated amended agreement.
Okay.
So just again for clarification, so number one, if motions required would be approve ZC twenty-two zero zero-two change of zoning regulation to prove the revised master development plan, including the modification to five point four. Is that what you wanted to say?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Sometimes I don't speak all the words when I ask a question. Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions about the updated language? Vice Chair Begay?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I just want to say that how soon can we get the revision as a packet, as a whole packet?
Again, the revision was emailed to you, I believe, yesterday.
No, we didn't. I don't think.
Then I guess the agreement is finalized, so it's all set. I think we can get it to you as soon as possible.
Meaning as soon as possible?
We can commit to getting that to you tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have two motions that are required.
And I think we still have a public hearing.
Oh, yes.
So if there's anybody wants to add on to the public hearing, since we've had this discussion.
Are there any public comments for the public hearing?
Chair Vasquez, I see no raised hands.
Thank you. All right, before jumping ahead, I will now close the public hearing. And now, we have a motion. Supervisor Ryan?
That off again, okay. Thanks. And, and so the first motion that I will make is that we approve ZC twenty-two dash zero zero-two, a change of zoning regulation to approve the revised master plan development, or the master development plan. That's including the modifications in section five point four. Do we, you know, I can, I wrote it down. Do we need to, we, I think it would be good to reread that. In, in that, in the last sentence, labeled with number one, a fee of three thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars may be provided upon issuance of each building permit for a single-family dwelling. The entire payment shall be paid in full at, within ten years of the effective date of this approval. So we actually got the wording. I'm waiting for you guys to correct me if I get it wrong. So. I can see Abby's in back right behind you, Heather, ready, ready to make sure I do. So, and continuing my motion and modified RM twenty slash A and modified CH ten thousand zoning standards with the approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten. That's my motion.
Thank you. Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, and I would second that motion also with making also similar findings as Supervisor Ryan, that it is consistent with, it conforms with the comprehensive plan and its amendments, as well as you indicated, the area, like staff area plan and the Belmont area plan. Also that the change is in the interest and will further the public health, safety, comfort, convenience and welfare is also set forth by Supervisor Ryan. And that the change will not adversely affect the established character of the surrounding neighborhood, nor will be, nor will it be detrimental to the adjacent properties. Once again, as more is fully set forth by planning and zoning and also Supervisor Ryan. So I do second this motion.
Thank you, Supervisor Horstman. So we have a motion by Supervisor Ryan and a second by Supervisor Horstman. Can we now get a vote, please? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, motion passes for both motions, right? Or was there going to be a second one?
Right now, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Okay, so now we have a second motion required. Supervisor Ryan?
And, and as noted again, that we have outlined in our comprehensive report provided by Planning and Zoning as a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that they also made the conditions set forth for a subdivision. With that, in noting that they are within our report, I can make those same findings. I move that we approve Sub SUV dash twenty-two dash zero zero-three. That's an eighty-four lot subdivision preliminary plat with approval of the ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero forty-seven.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan, for the motion. Can I get a second?
And I'd second that as well for the same findings as were set forth by Supervisor Ryan and the Planning and Zoning Comprehensive Report.
Thank you. We have a second by Supervisor Horstman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, the second motion passes.
Well, congratulations and good luck. Darren, thank you for all your cooperation as we work forward with the transportation plan. And, and look forward to future housing and, and commercial opportunities for the communities out in this area. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And thank you Supervisor Ryan for reading that motion, because I was dreading reading it. All right, thank you. So before we move on to the next public hearing, just colleagues, do we need a five-minute bio break? So please take a five-minute bio break. We'll come back at seven thirty-one. Thank you. We'd like to get started so we can get done in a reasonable time. So, the next item is item twenty-nine is a public hearing. Staff will present first, then the applicant will present. I will then open the public hearing and ask for comments from the public. At that time Deputy Clerk Weber will provide instructions on how to provide comments in person and virtually. First, we'll start off with our staff's presentation.
Good evening, Chair Vasquez, Supervisors. I'm Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff. I am sharing my screen now to give you our PowerPoint presentation. And it looks like we're working. All right. So this is appeal, appeal twenty-three zero zero one. Um, and it is an appeal by the appellant of the Planning and Zoning Commission denial of CUP twenty-three oh seven. Um, that CUP conditional use permit request was for a hundred and twenty-foot cell tower along double A Ranch Road in Kiababa Estates West in District One. I would point out what district we are in. Okay Val, I'm gonna need help here with looking for the, uh, on a laptop or, oh, this thing. This one, okay.
Got it.
Just, just for clarity, sometimes we get competitive with our own districts here, that's all. That's our levity. All right.
Okay, it wasn't me. Neither one of us can get it forward.
It's because it fell. It was working.
Or else it stopped, sure. Oh, I think it was. I'll try it again.
It's the same, it worked for Bob.
We've got it, we just can't advance the slides. By any of the methods. Stuff here, you know, I'm gonna go to share. And then get it into presentation. So I, actually I just, we had it in presentation mode, I was sharing that.
Right.
So now let's get this in the presentation. There we go.
Yeah.
Okay. Didn't like the other one, did I? Again, uh, apologize about that. Um, so again, I'm Jess McNeely with Community Development Department. Appeal twenty-three oh one is an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission denial of CUP. That is a conditional use permit, twenty-three oh seven. That was a conditional use permit request for a hundred and twenty-foot cell tower, a hundred and twenty-foot tall cell tower along double A Ranch Road in Kiababa Estates West. The, uh, applicant originally to Planning and Zoning Commission, now appellant, is Sean Sanchez of State Forty-Eight Development out of Scottsdale. And they are operating on behalf of the CUP applicant who is, uh, who is vertical bridge of Boca Raton, Florida. And the property owner here is Republic Properties of Scottsdale. The zoning of this property is CG, that is commercial general. So that's our most common commercial zone. Ten thousand indicates ten thousand square foot minimum lot size. So when, when you hear CG ten thousand, that's just basically commercial zoning. The size of this property here is a point two-three acre portion. So pretty, about a quarter acre, smaller than a quarter acre portion of a six-point-five acre parcel. So the, the applicant appellant's request of you, the board, is to reverse the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny CUP twenty-three oh oh seven and approve CUP twenty-three oh seven. Again, request for a hundred and twenty-foot tall wireless telecommunications facility. Wireless telecommunications facility is the technical term in our zoning ordinance for cell tower. So to orient you to the location we're talking about, this is a vicinity map, and we've got the, um, subject property highlighted here, um, with a leader arrow. You can see it is within Kiababa Estates West. You can see the pattern of subdivided, uh, lot lands out in that area. You can see that is access and we've labeled on your, um, on this slide here, double A Ranch Road. Double A Ranch Road comes out of Ashfork. Ashfork sits right along I forty, right on the side of I forty. Um, and, uh, you can see a county boundary map on this slide. That would be everything that is not, um, kind of in color would be Yavapai County. And our site is within Coconino County. So Ashfork and I forty, uh, most of I forty on this slide is within Yavapai County. And, uh, of course, we are within Coconino County, which is why this is before you this evening. Um, the other things I would point out, uh, by this slide is to the east of the property out here, um, you see the color indication of this is all national forest land, right? And then you see the pattern of the subdivided land of what we all generally know as Kiababa Estates West. And it is intermixed with this checkerboard pattern. The blue checks are state lands. So, um, also considered, uh, what, what we often consider our public lands. So here's a little bit of a zoom in to the subject property and aerial photograph of the exact site. So the subject property, the six-plus acres, um, that we're discussing here is labeled as the subject property outlined in white. You see that it is just east of double A Ranch Road. And you see it's labeled here as zone CG ten thousand, commercial zoning. And by the aerial photograph you see here on this image, you see an active cinder mining activity. So, the, um, the subject property is a, is a smaller location, about a quarter acre. And you see it labeled there with a circle, and you see where it is, it has been moved out of the way to the, uh, to the west and to the south of the active cinder mining operation. Uh, you see the AR label further to the west here. That is AR agricultural residential zoning. The residential zoning that the vast majority of this area, uh, is zoned and developed with. And you can tell by the, by the aerial photograph with the trees, some of these, some of these sites are developed, you've developed. You see some rooftops, you see some improvements, and a few of the lots are, are of course undeveloped as well. So this is essentially a CG ten thousand, a commercial, um, island. It was platted back when this area was, was platted probably the sixties or seventies, uh, designated as commercial, and it's surrounded by residential zoning. So there are some special considerations, uh, that we always let's, like to let the Planning and Zoning Commission, and you all know when you're having a hearing regarding a cell tower application. Um, one of the things we'd like to bring up is what can't be considered, uh, when discussing cell towers. The primary issue that can't be considered, um, when discussing, uh, making the findings to approve a cell tower case, in this case, a conditional use permit. Um, what can't be discussed is determination of impacts, health impacts from RF radio, radio frequency radiation. That is entirely within the purview of the FCC, Federal Communication Commission, cannot be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission or you, the board. Um, it's kind of above our pay grade, so to speak. The FCC determines what is healthy and safe in the way of cell towers. We all know that we have cell towers around us. Most of us probably have a cellphone on us right now. And we leave, uh, that discussion regarding health safety of cell towers, um, at the FCC. And, uh, the FCC prevents the county from legally making decisions on approving or denying cell towers based on RF impacts to health. Um, in addition to the findings of fact, um, in our zoning ordinance to approve a conditional use permit for a cell tower, there are two additional considerations for, in this case, the board to consider based on federal statutes. The first is, has the applicant demonstrated there is a significant gap in their coverage? Their cell coverage, is there a significant gap for this applicant? And the second one, um, if there is a significant gap in this, in their coverage, is this, is the proposed tower the least intrusive means of addressing that coverage gap? So just to get a little further into, um, the information we have from, essentially from, from the FCC, a significant gap in coverage exists when a provider, that would be a, a service provider, is prevented from covering a significant gap in its own coverage. The least of, the least intrusive means requires that the provider show that their tower, to fill this significant gap in coverage, is the least intrusive means. Does the site location, design of the tower, provide the least impact? So least intrusive means would mean the least impact. Uh, and of course, our zoning ordinance gets into some details in how we, how we define least impact, um, by our community. So the applicant provided the, the following information regarding their proposed facility. Um, this tower would provide for co-location. So in addition to the, to the current provider that's being discussed, um, it could include multiple antennas and it could, could include microwave antenna. The facility would be located within a fifty-foot square enclosure. This would be surrounded by an eight-foot tall chain link fence. Uh, the fence would contain colored slats, which essentially screens the base, um, the base of the tower and the equipment to the base of the tower from the surrounding environment or from the surrounding area. And the colors of the slats would, would help it to blend in with the environment. We would point out that the app, the information we received from the applicant indicates that the tower does not meet our code's requirement for a hundred and five-foot setback of its height. Uh, and this would be from the property line, uh, to the west of it on double A Ranch Road. Um, however, our code does allow for, for safety purposes of collapse, um, then, uh, having a certified engineer designate that the, if the tower were to structurally fail, it would collapse within a seventy-five-foot radius on its own, on its own site, so to speak, not going on to a neighboring site. Um, per the applicant's information, no lights would be installed on the top of the tower. That's always a concern in our county, so, um, no concern with this one. And any other outdoor lights on the property would meet our zoning ordinance dark sky requirements. This is the proposed tower color, so gray, um, is intended to, uh, to blend in with the horizon and its general environment. This is the site plan provided by the applicant. So you see in that larger six-and-a-half acre site, what this smaller square of the, about a quarter acre site fits, fits within it. And you see its proximity to, uh, to double A Ranch Road, just to the west southwest of the tower location. This is an elevation drawing, um, provided by the applicant. Um, the, uh, what we would call antenna arrays, um, three kind of in dashed line, uh, below the top one that's in a harder line would indicate where future co-locations for other carriers, uh, could locate their antenna arrays. And this is the applicant's current coverage map. Staff, our staff will try to be brief, we're planners, um, and the, the applicant is, is in this business, so to speak. And I believe they will do, um, a better job, is that is their expertise to discuss their coverage maps. Um, but it is important that we, that we explain the coverage as we understand it, as the Planning and Zoning Commission understood in their hearing, um, in order to, for you to understand what's being requested and the Planning and Zoning Commission's, uh, decision. So I would point you to the key in this map in the lower right-hand corner. It goes from top to bottom from kind of a, a reddish-orange, um, to a, uh, a green, progressing from a lighter green to a darker green, uh, and then to a, to a even darker green. Um, so what I will point out is that what that key is stating is the orange at the top is where there is no coverage. And you can see some of that, oh, kind of far out here, if you can see my, my cursor indicator, uh, on the screen or my arrow indicator on the screen, um, far north northwest of the site. Um, and, uh, I would point out that, um, the current coverage map, uh, shows an existing tower, the nearest existing tower. I believe it's, uh, just under five miles away in Ashfork, right along I forty. So, the existing tower that you see, apologies, I'm trying to get my, it's a little bit of delayed response on the arrow here. This is the existing tower at Ashfork, the nearest existing tower in the area. Um, I will point out that, that we were confused as well early on. The red, uh, that you see indicating that existing tower is just indicating the existing tower. That red color doesn't play into the coverage map at all. Likewise, there's, there's kind of a red bar just to the upper right of that existing tower. Um, from, best we can tell, that, that red bar is essentially, um, blocking out some script right there. So that red bar has nothing to do with, with the coverage, uh, with the coverage, um, analysis either. So you can see that the best coverage in this area and existing on the current coverage is the dark green following a line out along I forty. Makes sense. Uh, I, you know, along I forty, you're gonna want to have good coverage. Um, but the dark green surrounding this existing tower is the best coverage in this area. And of course, you see the proposed tower, similar, um, uh, graphics here. The proposed tower shows essentially three arrays pointing to this, to the south on kind of the, the lower quadrant of, of a circle, so to speak. And again, it has a bar to the right of it with that red. That red has nothing to do with the coverage analysis. And you see that the majority of the area to the south southwest of the existing tower location, but no tower is there right now. So that area, um, would meet, uh, from what we understand. on this coverage map, the residential level of coverage. Our understanding of that is that if you were in a, in a home built to residential construction standards, you would have coverage in that home. Okay, and then farther to the, to the north, northeast, you have coverage that is not as good that you might get in a car or outdoor. So that is discussion of the existing coverage map and a little bit of orientation to the color coding on this thing. Now we go to the proposed. What would the coverage be like after this cell tower is installed? Okay, and that's where you see a darker green to the south, a little bit to the southeast, and then, and then a pretty good distance to the west, a little bit to the northwest. So if you're seeing, and I'm indicating with my arrow here, where the darker green designates or shows what the proposed tower would bring in improved coverage. A pretty good zoom in of this. So we're way zoomed in on the proposed tower location. You see a little bit of the street grid network. You also see the main road running through this area is double A Ranch Road. And we've actually put some markers on here for scale to help you understand. This tower shows improving that coverage from the residential level inside of a residence to the commercial level, inside of a building built to, to commercial standards. Extends a little bit to the south. That does include the existing K E W volunteer fire station. And it goes out about two miles to the west is where you're seeing, where you're seeing a little bit of improved coverage from the residential coverage level inside of a residence to the commercial coverage level inside of a commercial development. Of course, we don't have any commercial development in this area, except for the cinder mine, which is primarily an outdoor, outdoor commercial activity as a cinder mine. We will point out a couple of things that the Planning and Zoning Commission found in their analysis and that we heard in the public hearing. First off, Planning and Zoning Commission saw the difference between before and after as being, well, this is a residential area and there is coverage in this area. So as you know, because this is an appeal, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not find that there is a significant gap in coverage in this area. So they didn't feel there was a significant gap to be improved. We never heard from and didn't get comments from the, the fire department. So that did not become an issue in the public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did not hear any support for this request from the fire department. So that, that was not a factor. And the testimony we got from the neighbors who live in the area, and, and we got a lot of that testimony, was that they do have coverage in their homes, that they do have coverage in this area. So the analysis that was, that took place at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing and understanding, try, as best as we could, understanding these, these coverage maps with the presentation that was given to them is that there is coverage in the area, there's not a significant gap in the, in coverage. Where the least coverage is, is actually to the north, northeast, where you see the lighter color where I'm indicating with, with my arrow right now, and there's no change to that area. So that's, that is what was pointed out at the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is the one place in my presentation, we have the coverage maps, so I wanted to get into that detail with you while we had the coverage maps up. And again, the, the applicant will, I'm sure, do a much better job in discussing the coverage map and, and the true differences.
Yes, Supervisor Fowler.
This map that you're, thank you, that you're showing current, this is the current coverage right now? Or this is the after once it's?
This is the after.
This is the after.
I'll, I'll go back. That's the current. Of course, it's not as zoomed in, so it is a, a lighter green in that area. That is the after.
Yeah, when you zoom in.
A zoom in on the after, right.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler. Are there any other questions at this time? Please continue.
Thank you. So the applicant did submit what we call photo simulations or photo sims, visual representations of, of what the surrounding area looks like currently and what it would look like after the cell tower is built. So this is an image about fourteen hundred and fifty feet from the tower on Verdy Drive. And I would point, orient you to this image that in the upper right hand corner, you have a little key. So the star indicates where the tower location is. And then they give a distance and then they show a little arrow showing that's where the image is showing a simulation from. It's showing a photograph as the site looks today. And then as it would look with the tower fourteen hundred feet away. And that, there's a little, a little indicator right here showing where the tower would be. So that's fourteen hundred and fifty feet away from the south southwest on Verdy Drive. That is fourteen hundred feet away from the west, a little bit to the south on Delta Drive. And again, the little indicator shows where you would see the cell tower from that location. This is from one thousand thirty feet away from Mesa Drive. And this site is to the east, northeast. And you, you can see in this image where, where there is, you are seeing a little bit of the vertical element on this image taken from one thousand thirty feet away. This is from one thousand feet away, a little more to the north, a little bit to the northeast on Fountain Drive. And again, you can see where the vertical element projects up in, in the, the after image on the right. This is from seven hundred and fifty feet away from Charm Drive. And this is from the east, a little bit to the southeast. And you're seeing vertical projection at that location. This is from three hundred feet away from north of the proposed site on double A Ranch Road. So if you were driving south on double A Ranch Road, the proposed site is on your left, would be on your left as you're driving. So the image on your left would show the, the before and the image on the right would show the after, where at three hundred feet, this is where you would see see the tower from three hundred feet away. And of course, the residences in the area would be off to the, the residential area in this immediate area would be off to the right of this image here. And then we get on to the site within, so on to the actual subject property within thirty feet of the tower. And this is what it would look like from thirty feet from the tower. So probably if you're standing at the closest point on double A Ranch Road, it, it wouldn't be as prominent as this, but it would certainly be visible. Any questions from the board members on the visual simulations? And of course, and I would point out that, that, that the, the applicant, I'm sure, will be able to do a better job of explaining this as well.
Supervisor Horseman.
Yeah, and I do have a couple of questions on this. I know that where the proposed site is, I know it's in a residential area. You've shown us the breakdown and the development of that area and some of the lots. So where's the nearest lot, residential lot? How far away is it from this proposed site?
So the See if we can get to a slide that would give our, and, and that would, would also be a very good question for the applicant as well. This would be the image that I would say is the best indicator as their, their site plan. You see the square fenced in area, the tower would fit within the middle of that. The tower is, I believe, eighty-seven feet from the property line along double A Ranch Road. Double A Ranch Road, probably sixty foot right away. So we're, we're looking at probably hundred and hundred and forty plus hundred and fifty feet from, from the actual tower to, and, and again, I, I would encourage you, Supervisor Horseman, ask the applicant there that if they, if they have an exact dimension to the nearest property line of a residential property.
And, and I take it this area is pri, is not ponderosa pine? Is that, it's the smaller pinion bushes, is that correct?
So, Travaskos and Supervisor Horseman, you were beating me to the punch. Yes, we, we do, we do point that out. Especially when we get into the analysis that our, that our code asks us to do in, in how we how we permit towers. And that would go right to the, the next discussion, which would be conformance with our zoning ordinance. So our zoning ordinance has a pretty well-written section, a full section on cell towers, pretty common for local governments. And actually, we updated this with the two thousand nineteen update to the zoning ordinance. So some of this is, is really pretty fresh in how we, how we plan for cell towers in our zoning ordinance. So we have a list of preferred facilities, those are preferred facilities. While one preferred criteria for facilities and they're ranked one through ten. And this site would hit on the preferred facilities number four. It's a, it's a new site on a previously disturbed site. And our zoning ordinance literally says such as cinder pits, and it just so happens that this application is, is on a site with a cinder pit. It also hits number six out of ten on the preferred facilities in being a new tower hundred foot to a hundred and seventy-five foot in a commercial zone. So this list of preferred facilities does give more preference for towers to go in a commercial zone as opposed to a residential zone. So number one, most preferred, ten least preferred. I would point out that the AR zone, which is the zoning, most of the zoning, the residential zoning surrounding this area, a tower on, in the AR zone would, would drop way down to nine out of ten on the preferred facility list. We also have a disfavored facility list. The disfavored criteria is not in a rank order, it just lists what are some disfavored facilities. This would hit disfavored facility item number C because it is very close to or adjacent to residential areas. And here on this slide, I realize I'm breaking all the PowerPoint rules by giving you a whole bunch of bullets here, but this is the full list of one through ten. At the top, the most preferred facility is co-look those and, co-locate those antennas on a tower that already exists, so you don't build a new tower. And the least preferred facility at the opposite end of the spectrum, number ten, would be a new tower in one of the other zones, not listed above, and so that presumably like an RS residential single family, a much smaller, smaller lot. So you see on this slide where item number four, new sites on previously disturbed areas such as cinder pits. And number six, new towers, facilities, a hundred to a hundred and seventy-five feet in commercial or industrial zones. So that's where it falls on the preferred facility list. And then we go to the disfavored facilities. Again, the disfavored facilities are not in any rank order. It's just a, a listing, A, B, C, D, E, F, of, these are some of our disfavored facilities. That includes impeding with a federally designated scenic corridor, this is not. But you, you can see some of the logic that went into each of these items, A, B, C, D, E, and F. So this item is also listed as a, or this application, we would also consider a disfacil, disfavored facility off of this list in that it is adjacent to or very close to residential areas, have you seen, as you've seen in the images. So from the applicant's submittals to us, their factors that led to the selection of this site were that it meets the applicant's coverage, coverage objective. In this case, it was for, for T-Mobile, although they would expect that other, other carriers, if they wanted to in the future, could co-locate on this tower. Other factors leading to their selection of this site is that it's close to double A Ranch Road, which would be the most important north-south thoroughfare in this area. It is located in a commercial zone on a disturbed cinder pit site. There are a few other scattered commercial areas in the general K E W area, very similar to this one. It's a small pocket, this was planned out again back when this area was platted, subdivided and platted in the sixties or seventies. There are a few other commercial zoned areas. None, none of them very near this location, but within the greater larger K E W area that follow the same pattern. A small commercial node surrounded by residential zoning, probably anticipated that maybe some neighborhood commercial someday would go there. Let's see, additional factors the applicant considered, the surrounding AR zone does rank lower on the preferred facility list, it ranks nine. Other areas on this property, when we zoomed you in on this property, this site did go kind of on the south, south east corner of this, excuse me, southwest corner of this property against double A Ranch Road. Because to locate elsewhere on this CG zone parcel, this larger six and a half acre parcel would be in the middle of the, of the cinder mine operation. So obviously, the cinder mine is going to continue to operate. And it did need to go, eh, it, one of, you know, one of the spots on this site that would, that would not impede with the cinder mine operation. It does provide better coverage to the K E W volunteer fire department. That was one of their, their logic points. Of course, we haven't heard from the, from the fire department on this application. And to the point of the most preferred facilities, they did not choose to do a camouflaged or fake pine tree tower because there's, this is primarily a juniper area. And it would really look out of place to have, to have one fake pine tree in the area, which certainly would not blend in with any other trees on the horizon. So to reiterate once again, just yet another shot of, of the aerial photograph of the network of roads in the area and network of lots. And, and, and you see that this is, this is the one CG, commercial general ten thousand zoned area surrounded by a, a network pattern of other, of smaller AR zoned residential lots. So the applicant, the applicant did their required citizen participation plan. They notified seventy-four properties within a quarter mile of, of subject property. They invited them to a virtual meeting back in December. Nine people actually attended the meeting and provided, provided comments. Most of the comments really addressed visual impacts from the tower. That's really what, what we saw as the majority of the comments, they came from the surrounding neighbors. There were some comments that came up for health concerns. As we all know, that cannot be a consideration in making the findings to approve or deny a, a cell tower. There were comments made regarding effects on property value, the potential for emergency generator noise. If the, if the grid power goes down and emergency generator would kick on, there were several other concerns noted. Staff and, and the applicant have received additional comments. And, and of course, all the comments that we've received were included in your packet. The, the majority of them came in, came in email. So this is a map that shows you the application area highlighted in yellow. That is a circle indicating the quarter mile radius that was notified for the citizen participation plan and, and who was also notified for all the hearings, for both the public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission and this hearing with you all this evening. So the real point of issue in a conditional use permit hearing would be the findings of fact as listed in our adopted zoning ordinance. And so we're, we're going to go through the findings of fact and point out the analysis that, that came from the Planning and Zoning Commission that has been forwarded from them to you. So the first finding of fact for CUP, item A, that the proposed location of the conditional use is in accord with the objectives of this ordinance, that would be the zoning ordinance, and the purpose of the zone in which the site is located. The commission's response is the proposed tower is not in accord with the objectives of the zoning ordinance because it would be located adjacent to and completely surrounded by rural residential neighborhoods. The tower would be constructed eighty-seven feet from double A Ranch Road with homes directly on the other side of the road. All other parcels immediately surrounding the tower are residential. The proposed site is therefore a disfavored facility under the zoning ordinance. So that was the findings of fact on item A as forwarded to you by the Planning and Zoning Commission. For item B, the zoning ordinance finding a fact, item B is that the proposed location of the conditional use and the conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. The commission's response that they forward to you is that the proposed cell tower would be det, would be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially, more materially injurious to properties or improvements. or materially more materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity because it would be located adjacent to and completely surrounded by rural residential neighborhoods. The tower would be constructed eighty-seven feet from double A Ranch Road with homes directly on the other side of the road. And all other properties, all other parcels immediately surrounding the tower are in fact residential. Item C, finding a fact required by the zoning ordinance for CUP that the proposed conditional use will comply with each of the applicable provisions of this ordinance, the zoning ordinance, except for approved variances. The commission's response that they forward to you is that the proposed conditional use is in technical compliance with the applicable provisions of the ordinance. But members of the commission questioned the engineer's report that the tower would be contained on the subject property in the event of a collapse. That was one concern with with the reduced setback of eighty-seven feet for one hundred and twenty foot foot tower. And of course, without that hundred and five percent setback, the tower is just that much closer to the road and that much closer to residential properties impacted by it. And the last finding of fact required by the zoning ordinance for CUP that the proposed condition that the proposed conditional use is consistent with and conforms to the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan or specific plan for the area. The commission's response to you would be that the proposed conditional use is not consistent with the comprehensive plan because it is not compatible, nor is it complementary with surrounding neighborhoods per community character policy six of the comp plan. The tower would be constructed in in an area completely surrounded by residential use. The character of the residential community is distinct is distinctly rural. The tower, although situated on the lone commercially zoned area in the vicinity, is incompatible and not complementary with the surrounding neighborhoods and the comprehensive and is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. So when we get through the zoning ordinance for findings that are required for a conditional use permit, there are two additional findings that have to be made per federal statutes that would apply to all cell tower requests. So if the board determines, as as the commission did, that the application does not meet the findings for zoning ordinance for CUP and believes the application should be denied, there are additional issues to consider based on federal statutes. First one is that the application may be denied if the applicant has not demonstrated there is a significant gap in coverage. That's where the Planning and Zoning Commission did not find that this area has a significant gap. The the coverage maps submitted by the applicant show that it does in fact have residential coverage. The next item we would go to, if there was a significant gap, is if the applicant has demonstrated a significant gap, the application may only be denied if the commission, or in this case, the board, determines the proposal is not the least intrusive means of addressing the significant gap in coverage. And the Planning and Zoning Commission found that there could be less intrusive locations for a tower to serve the area that were not explored by the applicant as per their testimony in the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. So several years ago, in another cell tower case that came to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the attorney's office made this nice little flow chart that lays out exactly the two the two criteria from federal statutes that we just discussed. So if you start in the left-hand rectangle, does the proposed cell tower meet the local jurisdiction's zoning zoning requirements? In this case, that would be the findings for CUP. In our case, the Planning and Zoning Commission could not make those findings that it or could not make the findings that the conditional use permit application was consistent with our with our zoning ordinance findings requirement. So if we take the no to the question, does the proposed cell tower cover a significant gap in personal wireless service? Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission saw from the applicant's propagation maps that there is residential coverage in this area. So they determined no and determined that the Planning and Zoning Commission as the authority for CUPs, in this case, this appeal to you, could deny the cell tower. Of course, if it the second block, the the one I'm indicating to here was found to be a yes, that there was a significant gap in coverage, then we would go to the analysis of is the proposed cell tower the least intrusive means to cover the significant gap? And even on that discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that that there were alternatives that had not been explored by the applicant. So they felt that no, this, even if there was a gap, this would not be the least intrusive location to cover that gap. So I realize that this is a pretty lengthy response, but we felt it was important to include in the public hearing for this appeal with you here this evening. We would like to, for the record, really get into the record what's on the slide of the commission's response to the considerations required by federal statutes. Essentially, the commission finds that the coverage maps provided by the applicant have not demonstrated a significant gap in coverage. That one does not exist in the area that would be served. The small residential area in which cell service would be improved is already adequately served according to public comment and the applicant's own coverage map, indicating that this area enjoys coverage adequate for residential use. The coverage map also shows that the proposed site does nothing to improve service to the neighborhood northeast of the site, which does not have adequate service for residential use and is therefore in a far greater need than the areas where service would be improved. The applicant failed to provide testimony or adequate answers to commission questions regarding the adequacy in zones. Again, back to the the little legend that we looked at, red, yellow, green, dark green of coverage. Furthermore, the applicant presented inadequate evidence supporting a finding that a tower at the proposed site would be the least intrusive means of bringing further coverage to the area. The commission and members of the public identified alternate alternate sites for the tower. The applicant offered nothing in rebuttal and no expert testimony on which to rely. The applicant offered to provide more information in the future, but such an offer at the public hearing to consider the conditional use permit was untimely. So the Planning and Zoning Commission in not being able to make the findings from our zoning ordinance or the federal statute requirements regarding gap in coverage had no problem denying this request. So the recommendation that is forward to you by the Planning and Zoning Commission is the board may uphold the commission's decision to deny CUP twenty-three oh seven through approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight, which is in your packets. However, if the board can make the findings to approve a cell a cell tower at this location, and if you choose to approve CUP twenty-three oh oh seven, staff does recommend the conditions that are in your staff report that was in your packet. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from the board at this time?
I'm going to reserve mine until after the public hearing, but I would, after the public hearing, like to make some comments and create a record.
Thank you, Supervisor Horstman. Are there any other questions? Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. So can we go back to the coverage map?
Would you like the before or the after coverage?
Before.
Okay.
What? What is that map telling us? It's so the orange is there's no coverage, white, there's no coverage. So when we think about adequate adequate use, we just want to see all green and we don't want to see yellow or orange. Or do we want to, is yellow okay? Or is yellow not good? Why is it that? What is this telling us that it is? There is, so because it's green, light green, not as green as the green over here, light green, there is enough coverage. That's what it's telling us.
So Chair Supervisor Fowler, I believe, yes, that's what that's what it's telling us.
Okay, so now when we go to, we've had several tower cases. So we always look at the the coverage map. You know, and and the coverage maps, I'm just wondering who who produced the coverage map? Was it our county or did they bring the coverage map? I guess they did, the applicant did. Okay, all right. And so I guess we just can't answer why this area when there's already coverage. So or I guess with the map here, adequate coverage. The line of sight. That was not when, you know, when we do other cases, we had a house. Where's the line of sight? Oh, from even like wind towers. We do line of sight. We didn't have that in this one. But people are complaining that they'll be able to see it from their house. Okay.
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, you know, one of the questions, it'll be a question for the applicant applicant also is usually we seek a co-location. We already see towers in this area that are providing coverage, so why the desire for? You know, we 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 prefer not to have multiple towers. Why the desire for the additional tower? You know, part of the questions associated with coverage, I see the what has been brought forward, I understand the commission's response based on what I'm seeing on this coverage map. But what the the discussion get into co-location at all was there?
The Travascos and Supervisor Ryan know the the discussion didn't get into co-location with the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think.
Other than the priorities.
Right, probably more than likely the tower that is at the Ashford site, which of course is not, it's in Yavapai County, so we'll never hear that one. The assumption is is probably co-location on that tower is which would be the nearest tower is is was would not get any improved coverage in in the areas that this tower could provide improved coverage.
Okay. That answers. Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions by board members? All right. Thank you for that presentation. And now would the applicant like to present?
Chairman Vasquez, members of the board, my name is Jacob Maskovich. I represent the applicant Vertical Bridge. I'm going to get to my presentation and we'll set that up now. I represent Vertical Bridge Development, which is in the business of building cellphone towers and related facilities in telecommunications systems. Vertical Bridge builds these facilities at the direction, at the request of cellphone cellphone providers. They don't build, as you might say in the construction industry, on spec. It's not a speculative tower. It's it's because a cellphone carrier identified a gap in coverage and said, we need a cellphone tower in this particular search ring. And Supervisor Ryan, just to answer one of your questions that you asked, the tower that is in Ashford to the south of I forty is a T-Mobile tower already? Okay, they have antennas on that tower already. There's a need for an additional tower to improve the coverage that in in the in the area. The specifics of the location we can get into in greater detail later. But again, T-Mobile's identified a gap in coverage. This is the gap in coverage that they're attempting to solve. And instead of listening to me, I'm not an expert in this area. I don't even pretend to be one on TV. We have an expert, an RF expert that can explain in greater detail the gap in coverage that T-Mobile was attempting to solve with this particular tower. His name is Stephen Kennedy. And I think he's best positioned to address the board's questions with respect to the gap in coverage and explain how it is that the coverage maps that were provided that may have been a little bit confusing do indeed demonstrate a gap in coverage. And the gap in coverage that this tower is intended to solve and remedy. So with that, I'd like to turn this sometime over to Mr. Kennedy to address the gap in coverage. When he's concluded, I then will talk through this particular location and how it really is the least intrusive means for this particular area to solve the gap in coverage.
Hi, my name is Steve Kennedy. As he said, I'm a radio frequency engineer. I have thirty-three years of design experience in wireless telecommunications networks. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. There you go. Can you see the RF design analysis on the screen?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, one moment, please. Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, if I could just ask a question, Mr. Kennedy. And just out of curiosity, was this information presented to P and Z?
No, ma'am, it was not.
So you you did not testify and this information was not presented before our planning and zoning commission. Is that right? So this is all new.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Horstman. You may continue with your presentation, sir.
Okay, so I geek out on this stuff, so I'm going to try to keep it from getting too glassy-eyed on the stuff. So why do wireless carriers build sites? Two reasons. Coverage or capacity. Capacity is providing bandwidth or processing capacity in areas where customers serve near. And now thirty years ago, when all you could do on a phone was talk, it did not require as much bandwidth for a voice conversation between two users. But as you know, we've got phones now that stream data, surf the web, look at emails, run apps. The amount of bandwidth that's being required by the customers is significantly greater, especially in the streaming services. Coverage, so that's that's capacity. Coverage is the ability to allow the mobile phone to actually talk to a tower with antennas. So that's coverage. So the ability for the phone to connect. But the second part of that is the capacity, which is the ability to transfer data at a decent rate, at a decent quality from the mobile to the transmitting site and the transmitting site back to the mobile. What's the objective of this new site is to provide additional bandwidth for customers near surrounding the proposed site, provide better throughput for indoor sites, indoor users in the area and offload surrounding T-Mobile sites. It's going to provide coverage in the Kaibaba Estates West, provide coverage along double A Ranch and the feeder roads, and the area has a significant gap in service for not only coverage, but capacity as well. Why is this important? Ninety-six percent of Americans own a cellphone. Fifty-seven percent of American homes rely on the cellphones exclusively, and eighty-four percent or more of nine-one-one calls are made from cellphones. Proposed site, one hundred and twenty-foot monopole tower, T-Mobile would be located one hundred and sixteen feet above ground level. So why here? Lack of coverage in Kaibaba Estates West, lack of services surrounding rural area, significant amount of increased network use in in the more suburban and rural areas of Arizona as more people work from home from COVID. Users' mobiles reporting low-quality connections for all three big carriers. The area is shown in propagation maps as a significant gap in coverage. Area shown as in user mobile reports as a significant gap in capacity. So here's the proposed site, zoomed in a little bit. This is the T-Mobile, the existing T-Mobile sites that provide service within the area. We have the ones to the east, which is sixteen point six seven miles away, one to the south, southeast, which is sixteen point three nine, one to the west, which is thirteen point one six, and then the one to the south in Ashfork at four point seven six miles. So those are the existing T-Mobile sites within the area, and once counsel had stated that T-Mobile is already on the tower in Ashfork. Putting antennas on top of antennas will not solve a coverage issue. You have to build another transmitting station. This is cell mapper. This is a third-party crowdsourced data. So this is for T-Mobile. And so what we're providing is we see that if you have neg one oh five, neg one forty, that's low, low, poor service quality. And we can see where we see the sites along I forty, that we've got pretty decent service quality. Back towards the east of Ashfork, it's not as good as it could be, but I'll talk about that in a moment. And then we have the sites out west that's providing service. So you can see the the green, the the lighter green is better service. We get into darker red and the orange or the red, it's not as good. We get into darker red and the orange or the red, it's not as good. So these are mobiles that are driving up and down these locations. And you can see that there's, there's some users making drives back in towards Kaibab Estates. Uh, this is open signal. This is where another crowdsourcing data, if you ever load the Facebook app on your phone and you give permission to load all these other apps. Uh, one of them is a thin client, so that when mobiles report back to servers on how good the quality of the coverage is. Now, uh, thing to talk about is spectrum. T-Mobile has a, a pretty good amount of spectrum. And the reason they do that is they're, they're providing fixed wireless services for home internet. But there's two types of spectrum. There's low-band spectrum, which the frequency is lower and it covers a larger distance for the same amount of power. And then there's mid-band, uh, that's a frequency that does not propagate as well and does not work as well indoors as the lower-band uh, frequencies do. So if we look, the, the total amount of spectrum, low-band spectrum T-Mobile owns is nine point six eight percent of their allocation of spectrum in bandwidth, megahertz. Uh, ninety point three two percent of that allocation is mid-band spectrum. So I'll, I'll talk about that in the coverage maps here in a second. So low-band spectrum has larger coverage area. Mid-band spectrum has more capacity or throughput, so it can handle more users' uh, capacity needs. So here's a comparison. So if we look at current, uh, you know, or not current, if we look at the proposed site being propagated within the modeling tool. Um, we see that low-band covers a significantly greater service. Now, the green, the colors, I, I reduced the amount of colors uh, to make it a little easier to read. Uh, for one reason, for the second reason is up in the upper right in the legend, you see indoor service, which is neg eighty-five. In-vehicle, which is neg ninety-five, and on-street, which is neg one oh six. So why do these levels mean anything? The FCC has utilized these levels within their uh, broadband wireless uh, guides for when um, carriers try to get money back from, from building out in areas that do not have service. Uh, or low service or, or low amounts of, of uh, people living in the area. The, the levels of RF coverage that they use are neg eighty-five for indoor. So that means when it's green, there's a ninety-five percent probability that that site will provide service indoors for users. If it's yellow, it's neg ninety-five, that's in-vehicle. So if it's a yellow area, it's gonna provide service in a car. Uh, just because there's windows and it's not bricks and sticks or anything of that nature. So RF propagates easier into the car than it does into the house or uh, building. And then on-street is you're outside, you're working in the lawn, you're on the golf course. You've got a open area, you're not, you're not inhibited by anything around you. That's neg one oh six. Once again, this is what the FCC recommends in their broadband wireless uh, quality. So this is a difference between low-band, significantly greater indoor service versus mid-band. Now remember, low-band is about nine percent of T-Mobile spectrum. Mid-band is about ninety percent of T-Mobile spectrum. So the amount of coverage that you're getting from the Ash Fork site on most of the frequency bands that T-Mobile has is not as strong. It's a lot of indoor, or uh, not a lot of indoor, a lot of in-vehicle and a lot of open field. Where if you look at the low-band, you're getting more service. Okay, so this is the current coverage. Um, I use an ATOL propagation tool. Uh, the, the maps provided by T-Mobile, uh, that, they're actually old maps and they're ran off of an old tool that T-Mobile no longer uses. T-Mobile now works in this ATOL, which all the big three wireless carriers use this propagation tool now. So if we look at the coverage map, the legend, green indoor, so there's current coverage indoor for what's going on in the area. Then there's in-vehicle, yellow. Uh, and on-street, red or open field. And then where you don't see coverage in these areas, there's, there's less than neg one oh six, which is getting down the areas where there's no coverage. So we saw is that mobile, when we were looking at the drive test data, it wasn't getting very good service as you moved up towards the north. Okay, here's the proposed coverage. So if the low, if the site comes in, the proposed site is, comes in, it will provide service. You'll notice a difference in how the antennas are set up. After conversations with the T-Mobile RF engineer, basically, we talked through some, some ideas about coverage and how to make it better and allow the site to provide more coverage to the north, uh, up along the roads and, and towards the area as well as down to the southeast and gives the engineer ability to maybe tweak this sector just a little bit to get some better coverage along I forty. So this is proposed coverage for low-band. Once again, green is indoor, yellow is in-vehicle, red is on-street. Here's mid-band, so this is mid-band current, current coverage, lot smaller for indoor and in-vehicle than what we're doing. And remember, ninety percent of T-Mobile spectrum works in this frequency block. So we're not getting as good a service because just the, the laws of physics and how higher frequencies don't propagate as well. So we see a difference from low-band to mid-band. This is proposed coverage for mid-band, so it's going to be providing a, a lot greater capacity or, or throughput levels, bandwidth levels towards the area where a lot of these houses are, uh, as well as the other things going on in the area. So this is where we get a little bit more in-vehicle. But uh, you know, my recommendation would have been a, a taller tower by at least, you know, eighty, a hundred feet. But uh, Vertical Bridge and, and T-Mobile came back with, they, they'd rather go a little shorter and not, not be seen so, so large and have to paint it and light the tower and put a generator on it. Okay, so if we look at the comparison, low-band zoomed.
Excuse me, one moment, sir. Supervisor Horseman?
So I guess uh, what I'd like to hear at this point is um, obviously, you had an opportunity to present this to Planning and Zoning. Uh, you sent out a public hearing notice to seventy-four property owners, inviting them to a virtual meeting for them to come in, for all of this to be gone over with the public, to get public input. And yet, you never presented this at that Planning and Zoning hearing. And so I gotta, I gotta ask you, why wasn't this fully discussed? Fully aired in front of Planning and Zoning with a full opportunity for public input at a virtual meeting?
Because I was not a Vertical Bridge uh, consulting engineer at that time, so I was not called in to help in that meeting.
And you know that this area is, uh, the cell tower is already, as it currently, is currently scheduled, is going to be eighty-five feet over the thirty-five foot maximum height, which is set by the Coconero County zoning, zoning ordinance. And yet, what you're telling us is you would like to have seen an additional eighty or a hundred feet in this tower, which would have put it, what, a hundred and eighty-five feet over the maximum height?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect.
So uh, T-Mobile uh, went back and, and so we're looking at current coverage. So current coverage shows that we have a lot of in-vehicle coverage and we have a lot of outdoor coverage and some lack of coverage. When we look at current, when we go to proposed, we see a lot of indoor coverage, a lot more indoor coverage, uh, actually more in-vehicle. And some of the areas where we had a lack of coverage, we obtain open field coverage down in the lower areas. Um, so we've, we've got a big difference. So a significant gap occurs right now because we're not providing in-building services within the area for the houses. And then uh, once we add the proposed, it does.
Uh, one moment please, uh, if you could hold on a second Supervisor Horseman, you had another question?
Yes, I do, I'm, I am really bothered by this. Um, there was more than adequate opportunity. I understand you weren't employed at the time, but there was more than adequate opportunity for this to be presented in front of Planning and Zoning, which is where we, the board, would like to have a full discussion. And quite frankly, where we want to have that full community meeting. So I am very concerned that we're going through with information that has never been presented, that the public has not had a time to hear or have the input. So at this time, I'd like to know if this is even appropriate for us to go down this path, given the fact they've already had a Planning and Zoning hearing on this.
Uh, Supervisor, Vice Chair Bageye first, please.
Um, I have a question for um, Mr. Peru and also Andy here. Is it required or mandatory to have all plans come through the Planning and Zoning first prior before going to the board?
Uh, Chair Bageye, this is a conditional use permit and all conditional use permits are first heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission with a recommendation, if necessary, to the Board of Supervisors. In this case, it is an applicant appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission decision for denial. So this applicant is asking you, as the board, to appeal the Planning and Zoning Commission decision to deny, to deny this application.
I second going into executive session.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll make.
Yeah, I was gonna, did you make a motion?
So we have a motion from Supervisor Ryan. And a second from Supervisor Fowler to go into executive session. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 We will be back once we're out, done with executive session, thank you. To get, to get legal advice. And so at this time, do any supervisors have any comments or questions? Supervisor Horseman.
Yes, Chair Vasquez, you know, I continue to be concerned because the information that is apparently being presented to us is so different than the information that was presented to Planning and Zoning. And quite frankly, even seems to be contrary to some of the information that was presented to Planning and Zoning. And so I was not at that Planning and Zoning meetings, but I believe Jess was there and I'd like to hear from him. You know, whether this is consistent with what was presented or substantially changes the information that was presented to P and Z.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez and supervisors. The thing that I noted in the submittals from the Planning and Zoning Commission, or the submittals to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the conditional use permit, the design of the arrays that were shown in the coverage maps that we discussed all pointed to south and to the east and the west. And it was noted in the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing that where the real lack of coverage was from the coverage maps that were reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission was to the north northeast. What I saw on the RF engineer's presentation and heard him say was they changed that array. So it's a different antenna array that would achieve different coverage from what was presented in the Planning and Zoning Commission. So more detailed information, sure, absolutely, but this is a change in the design of the tower array and how it works for coverage. So I would see this as very different from what the Planning and Zoning Commission heard and base their decision on.
Thank you. Supervisor Horseman.
Well, just in light of that, and certainly in light of what we've seen here this evening, I continue to be concerned that there really wasn't an opportunity for members of the public to hear this and to really have a meaningful meeting on this and this plan, especially if in fact the design of the array has changed. And so at this point, members of the board, if I may, I would at this time make a motion that we remand this matter back to Planning and Zoning so that they can have a full opportunity to see the new maps, the new design of the array, a new opportunity for the public to get notice and for them also to be present and provide their input on it. And besides this motion to amend, to remand it to Planning and Zoning, I also think that there should be an opportunity for the applicant to amend their application, be consistent with their materials.
I'll second the motion. And, and, you know, in looking at this, I would say, going along with the second that I have with this, as I, the materials I was looking at and the materials that were coming forward, you know, I do note significant change and, and and it provides an opportunity to go back and hear it appropriately. Thank you.
Ryan to remand this issue back to P&Z, that means we don't have to start over in the process but it does need to be amended before it can come back to the board after it goes through P&Z. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you everyone, we are adjourned for tonight, thank you.